Welcome, everybody. My name is Rob Shaw. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of the City of Nashua. I'll go through some housekeeping and some introductions for how tonight's meeting will run and how we proceed with the cases in front of us. So this is the May, make sure I get my—
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, yeah. I wanted to say thirteenth. May fourteenth, 2024, City of Nashua zoning board meeting. And we have currently five members in attendance right now. We might or might not have an additional alternate member joining us. I'll go through the attendance in a little bit. Basically, the zoning board is comprised of citizens that our role is to act as a semi-judicial body to provide relief for various aspects of land use code. Mostly, we hear variance requests and special exceptions. I know many, if not most, or almost all of you that are here in attendance tonight are for the appeal of an administrative decision, which is one of our lesser common tasks, but we will obviously be going through that tonight as well. So I'll explain a little bit first about variances and special exceptions. And maybe even before I do that, a couple other things, just obviously, if you have a cellphone, if you could silence that or put it on vibrate. Also, the acoustics in this auditorium are exceptionally good. That means even fairly light conversations out in the audience carry up here fairly significantly. So please, if you do need to have a conversation, if you could step out into the hallway, that would be great and much appreciated. And also, you'll see there, we have the podium with the microphone there. That microphone is detachable. That bar also goes up and down if you need to adjust that for height. But we ask that all testimony also be given at the podium because we do have these meetings recorded in multiple media. There is a written meeting minutes which do get published. We also have audio recording and video recordings as well through, it can be accessed through the city website as well as through Channel 16, Public Access, Channel 4. Yeah, I've gotten used to wing me, but we do have kind of a guide to help us through some of our areas. So, yeah, moving into that, the Chair is in control in the meeting, and so just if you can please follow any of my requests, that would also be much appreciated. Basically, the board does try to follow our procedures that are outlined in our bylaws as well as the actual aspects of the city code, the National City Revised Ordinances, as well as the state RSAs also govern a lot of what we need to adhere to. In these various cases, there's a procedural aspect of the applicant will come up and give their initial testimony about what they want to do regarding their case. They have up to 15 minutes for their testimony, followed by questions from the board. Sometimes the board will also ask questions during that testimony. Then we'll seek out anybody else that wants to speak in favor of an application. They'll have up to five minutes each for that. And then we'll seek out if there's anybody with questions, oppositions, or concerns regarding an application. And each one of you in that case will also have up to five minutes as well. If there are, if there is any of that opposition, questions, concerns, then we go into essentially a rebuttal round where the applicant can come back for five minutes to address any of the things that have been brought up by the counter testimony. And then one and only one person that was part of, those with concerns can speak to close things out. So that is what we call the public hearing. So where, again, we're seeking input from the applicant and the public. We close the public hearing, and then we open up for discussion here as the board. And then we will render some decision. Most time, it is, will be either an approval or denial. Sometimes we will table a case if there's more information needed or other special circumstances. We basically, I did talk about those two different kinds of cases. Again, we have variances and special exceptions. A variance is a request that is something that somebody wants to do that is not specifically allowed by the ordinance, but by meeting five criteria, the board will decide if those criteria are met and approve if that is the case. Special exceptions are slightly different. They do have five criteria, but they are actions which are allowed if special criteria are met, and that's also covered by, again, five different kinds of points of law. Per our bylaws, I noted that we have five full-time members. We actually do have our one alternate member with us as well now. So we have to proceed with hearing all cases as long as we have three members present. We obviously have more than that right now. I'll also note that our, all of our members that are present will participate in questions and discussion. It will only be during voting where we'll only have five members that are voting. Typically, will be the five full-time members if they're present. And if there's a recusal, or if we don't have five full-time members, then our alternates will also participate in the voting, and I'll note that as it happens. So also, to approve a case, there have to be three affirmative votes, and we basically proceed if we have a quorum of the board, which we obviously have a quorum. Any citizen has a right to contest a decision made by this board, and if you think that we have erred or made something, done a decision that's incorrect, you have the opportunity to appeal. There's a 30-day window for that, and you just need to put that in writing and deliver it to the planning department. We usually kind of note that as a reminder at the end of every case, pretty much. And if the rehearing request is denied by this board, the next step is you can still appeal or take the case to the Superior Court. And Mr. Falk from the planning department and Ms. Ochoa, also from the planning department, can help anybody with any questions in those regards. For this meeting, I noted we have all the full-time members, myself, Rob Shaw, the Chair, Mr. Steve Lionell, our Vice Chair, Mr. J.B. Boucher, our Clerk, Mr. Jay Menkara and Mr. Josh Neeley, our other two full-time members, and Mr. Andrew Sylvia, our alternate member. So let's see. I already noted our staff that's in attendance along with Mr. Derfie and Matt Sullivan are with us as well. Let's see. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are two. The Best Forward case at 581 Amber Street will be heard first tonight, as that was tabled from previous meeting. And the case at 115 Northeastern Boulevard has been postponed, and it will be re-advertised to go on the May 28th meeting.
All right. Thank you. We will hear the cases in order tonight, but I know Alderman Thibodeau had asked if he could provide testimony regarding case number seven, which is the, and I'll still read that case into the record ultimately, but that is the case at Archery Lane. I don't know if there are any other Aldermen that are in attendance. Okay. And so I think that's Alderman Sullivan, right? Yes. So I was going to ask you two, and are welcome to come up and give testimony here at the beginning of the meeting, knowing that you have the 7:30 BOE meeting, and you're always welcome to rejoin us, but we wanted to make sure we get your testimony now in case you aren't able to rejoin us in time after the Board of Aldermen meeting. So that is the one other kind of procedural change we'll have right now. So I will read that case into the record, and I think also, I think we do have a recusal for this case. Yeah, okay. So for attendance, the official roll call is Mr. Steve Lionell.
Present.
Mr. J.B. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Jay Menkara.
Present.
Mr. Josh Neeley.
Present.
And Mr. Rob Shaw is present as Chair, and then Mr. Sylvia.
Present.
So we do have that one. Mr. Boucher is going to recuse himself from this case, so he's going to just step down into the audience. So it's actually, it is listed as case number six on our, right here. So it's, the owner is Villaloo LLC applicant, Thomas Mosin IV. Oh, wait. I got the wrong case. I apologize. I didn't think any of that sounded right. It is case seven. Owner is New Life NH LLC. The applicant is Timothy Bosch, 37 Arrow Lane, Nashua, regarding 16 Archery Lane. This is an appeal of the administrative decision relative to an intended use of a property for a boarding house/room renting is not permissible under the land use code at 16 Archery Lane. So again, Alderman Thibodeau, if you want to come up, again, we'll take your testimony now, and you have up to five minutes for, yeah, set them. And if you give your, and the other thing is, for anybody that does come up, we always ask for your name and address for the record as well.
Chris Thibodeau, 71 Blossom Street, Nashua. I'm here in support of the residents of Archery Lane neighborhood. I'm speaking to the original intended purpose of this home, and although we definitely have an addiction problem in the state and in our own city, I agree people need a way back from those dark places. Many considerations should be looked at prior to selecting locations for sober living homes. As far as the city's GIS map is concerned, this home is not owned by a person, rather the home is owned by New Life NH LLC. If you were to do an internet search of New Life NH LLC, you will receive a search result close to the top. And if you click on New Life LLC, you will follow the results, and you will be directed to the website's landing page. Come and expand your sober living business, where you can find tools for starting your own sober living business. So it sure does appear to me that this home was purchased with every intention of running as a sober living business. Arguments have been made that this is a single-family dwelling, no different than owning a home and renting rooms to your family members, a group of college students, or a group of your best friends. I stand by the opinion that this is a different situation because one could make an assumption the owner of such a home would be residing in that home. Another thing to consider, this sober living dwelling owned by New Life NH LLC is within the quarter-mile restrictions put on by the city ordinance in location to Bishop Gerton High School and to the Nashua Kinder Care Facilities. In my opinion, the owner made a poor decision in selecting the location at 16 Archery Lane for their project of a recovery home in this residential neighborhood. I am not claiming that New Life LLC NH intended intentions are not wholesome and with the best of intentions at heart. I am also not claiming that New Life LLC NH should not be allowed within the city limits. I am claiming that they made a poor decision in selecting this particular location for this project.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Thank you, sir. Alderman Sullivan?
John Sullivan, 30 Holbrook Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, also Ward Nine Alderman. I just wanted to say thank you for making the changes in the agenda tonight so we could speak. I rise to stand in support with the residents of the Archery Lane neighborhood. My comments will be short and to the point tonight. Nashua's land use code, as outlined by council representing the residents, is clear. The use of a single-family home for this purpose is not allowed. Please review and reverse your decision from 15 March 2024. The intent of the owners of this single-family home is to use it to rehabilitate and counsel the occupants from past abuses, certainly a noble cause. However, the activities and mission of this owner are clearly not allowed in this neighborhood. While city administrators are relabeling this, there are five allowable uses for homes in the R9 district. This isn't one of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think that's it for our special testimony on case number seven, so I'll close that part of the public hearing back out, and we'll resume in the regular part of the agenda as we get back to. The one thing I don't have is the, for case number one.
If you want to read here, also, it has it here.
Okay. Thank you. All right. For our first case, as noted, the Best Forward case on Amher Street. It's JFC Real Estate LLC owner, 581 and 593 Amher Street, Sheet H, lots 107 and 627, requesting special exception from land use code section 190-24F to work in the 150-foot conservation zone associated with Penachuck Brook to allow for a new one-story, 24,773 square-foot service center and associated site improvements for the Best Forward Service Center redevelopment project. This is in the GB/MU zone, Ward Two, and this was tabled from the March 26th meeting. Is there somebody here presenting on the case? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street in Nashua, here representing the applicant. Also with me here tonight is Mr. John Crowley from JFC Real Estate, along with attorney Brad Westgate. We're here tonight seeking a special exception for conservation zone impacts under National Land Use Code 190-24F associated with a proposed vehicle service center on the Best Forward site, along with associated site improvements. Mr. Chair, I'm going to provide kind of just a brief recap of what transpired since the last meeting. I know there's a lot of folks in the room, so I'll try to be brief and get through the information, after which I'd be happy to answer any detailed questions. So as I stated in the first hearing, conservation zone impacts, it's not something that I believe is before this board too too much. Typically, it's wetland or wetland buffer type impacts. As you know, this section of the code, 190-24, deals with the water supply protection district in general, and specifically these conservation zones. So either 150 foot or 350 feet from some of the major water bodies and their associated wetlands in town. There's a specific criteria that we have to meet in making this request. If you read through that section of the ordinance, just as a reminder, it's really, the purpose of it is different than a wetland buffer, per se, and the focus of this conservation zone is really on stormwater management, watershed protection, and erosion control So in terms of what's transpired since the last meeting, we've since gone back to the Conservation Commission, as requested, seeking their favorable recommendation. We attended their meeting in April, took a sitewalk with the group a couple weeks later in April, and then appeared back before them last week, May 7th. As part of that effort, we incorporated a number of their comments, as well as some city staff comments that were received as part of the planning board process, as well as some New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain comments related to the specific stormwater management design. So very quickly, as it relates to the conservation zone, the plans have been revised to reduce the overall buffer impact. The plan we came before you folks with last time was around 26,000 square feet of buffer impact. Once we're said and done of implementing some of the CONCOM's stipulations from last week, that footprint or impact will be reduced down to about 21,000, so there's less tree clearing, less impact to that overall zone. And then with regards to impervious area, last time we were before you, we had a slight increase in impervious area. I know that was mentioned as a point of concern by some members of the board. After implementing the Conservation Commission's changes, which includes losing about 20 parking spaces and associated impervious area right within that buffer area, we will now be a decrease of 6,000 square feet. So going from adding 1,000 to decreasing 6,000 within that conservation zone. As I mentioned, we also are making a number of stormwater management design changes. I won't get into the weeds, but New Hampshire DES requires a specified practice now. The regulation was updated last fall in which any project that's within a certain distance from a Class A surface water, which Penachuck is, requires kind of the top-of-the-line treatment. It's a lined bio-retention or filtration system, brand-new kind of state-of-the-art, and so that's what we've implemented in the plans. To the layman, that just means we've got kind of the latest and greatest in terms of stormwater management, which will improve the condition that's out there right now. So as I mentioned, Mr. Chair, we did receive the Conservation Commission's favorable recommendation last week with three stipulations related to further reducing parking restrictions on pesticide and fertilizer use, which is within the ordinance, as well as committing to certain winter maintenance requirements for their contractor, all of which we're happy to agree to. Mr. Chair, last time we were here, I spoke to the various CUP criteria. My testimony is we meet those. Specifically, criteria number four talks to any special criteria, so I would reference 190-24F5, which speaks to projects in which existing areas of the conservation zone, which are currently developed, that are seeking to redevelop or expand. We touched on some of those last time. My testimony is we meet all five of those criteria. Two in particular is determination by the Conservation Commission that we will be respecting the conservation zone, as well as no increase to impervious area and meeting the city's stormwater management requirements. So my testimony here tonight is that we meet all of those criteria, and I'd be happy to answer specifics on those if there are any follow-up questions. At this time, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? I just, I just have one, and it might actually even kind of go to staff, but when I read the second stipulation from the CONCOM where it says use of pesticides and fertilizer is restricted within the conservation zone, I'm not clear when I read that if restricted means not allowed, or if there are just some significant restrictions. And I'm curious either how your interpretation of that is, or if staff understands that to be, because I can kind of read it as like, well, you're not allowed to do some, but maybe so, or does this mean there is no pesticide and fertilizer allowed within the conservation zone?
I wasn't at that meeting, so I don't know if there was just certain kinds of fertilizers that aren't permitted. I really don't have any answer, Tom.
It wasn't, it wasn't specified in terms of what that restriction would be.
Okay. I mean, I'm fine going with this verbiage, but it might be nice if we got CONCOM to just clarify that for the applicant at some point.
We can work with you. I'd be happy to, yeah, clarify that with the commission.
Like I said, because I can, I feel like I can read it, you know, either absolute or maybe there's just a significant restriction. All right. Any, anything else from the board? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify in favor of this case for Amher Street? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Anybody have any first thoughts about this or initial comments? Mr. Menkara?
I support the application. I generally supported it the last time I was here. I did feel that the Conservation Commission review was important, and so I'm pleased to see that that's happened and that as a result of that, we have seen an improved plan with reduced impact. So for those reasons, I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Wing?
Yeah, last, last time they were here, I also was having some concerns. Thank you for addressing all the concerns. The fact that they had a net decrease of about 6,000 square feet of disturbed area is really great. Sounds like a new stormwater pollution prevention plan with state-of-the-art equipment. You know, and the other concern, as Mr. Menkara was saying, was, you know, there was some concerns about the regulations there, specifically one section, and Mr. Zajak today did say that they are in compliance, so I am in favor of this application.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr..
I don't have anything to add. I am in support of the application, and I definitely wanted the Conservation Commission to weigh in on this, and I'm glad that they have.
Mr. Sylvia or Mr. Boucher?
I'm in support of the application.
Thank you.
Nothing bad.
Yeah, I'm in support as well, so would anybody like to make a motion for this case?
Well, I'll make the motion.
Do you need a cheat sheet again?
I need the, if I could borrow, yeah, we don't have, we don't have our—
We're lost without.
We're lost without the thing that has—
Sorry about that. My fault.
Okay. So I can make a motion on behalf of the owner, JFC Real Estate LLC, addresses 581 and 593 Amher Street, Sheet H, lots 107 and 627, requesting special exception from land use code section 190-24 subsection F to work in the 150-foot conservation zone associated with Penachuck Brook to allow for a new one-story, 24,773 square-foot service center and associated site improvements for the Best Forward Service Center redevelopment project. This is in the GB/MU zone in Ward Two. The board finds that this use is listed in the table of uses, that it will not create undue traffic congestion or undue pedestrian safety, that it will not overload public water drainage or sewer or other municipal systems. All the special regulations are fulfilled by testimony of the applicant, and that it will not impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of residents. So I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you. Mr. Menkara, thank you for the second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that's unanimous, so that passes 5-0. As noted earlier, and you certainly know, there's the 30-day window of appeal, but good luck with the project. We'll move on to the next case, which I'll read into the record, is owner Rogers Mobile Home Parks in Faith Farrell. Owners, 23 Cheryl Street, Sheet D, Lot 107. The request is for a special exception from land use code section 190-115, section A, subsection 1, to work in the 75-foot prime wetland buffer of the Nashua River to remove two pine trees. This is in the R9 zone, Ward Five. Is there somebody here to present this case? Please state your name and address for the record.
Faith Farrell, and the property is 23 Cheryl Street of Nashville, New Hampshire, and that property does about the Nashville River. So as that says, we're looking to get a special exception to remove the two pine trees. I've had the trees independently reviewed by Pete Chikarsky, an arborist within the state. Deb Chisholm from the Waterways Department was able to come out and view the property with me, and she was able to look at the trees and help me present to the Conservation Commission back in March, and they did make a favorable recommendation for the removal of the trees with the stipulation that the tree stumps would be cut to a certain height to help prevent bank erosion, and that there would be some different native plantings introduced in the area when the trees were removed. removed.
Thank you. It seems straightforward. Hang on a second in case the board has any questions for you. I'll just, I'll note that I appreciated all the information that was here in this environmental fact sheet, and just looking through it, it was like, I learned some stuff just hadn't thought about, like with the roots of the trees, and, and just that whole thing about having the high cut on the trees, and, and all, it was pretty, pretty interesting. So thank you for including that.
It was, it was interesting to learn some of those things and to work with Deb myself. So I did appreciate the time she took to make sure that I understood the behind-the-scenes of the decision that they made.
And I appreciate you coming here and doing this the right way, because not everybody always understands that these situations really call for some special handling. So...But it looks like we don't have any other questions. You can have a seat while we see if there's any other testimony. Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of the case at 23 Cheryl Street? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the case at 23 Cheryl Street? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Mr. Laino?
Yeah, I'm in favor. Everything's been done by the books, and perfectly reasonable.
Mr. Neely? I'm also in favor of this. This, this was a great application, as you, as you noted, really, which is why we have no questions. This comes down to safety. At the end of the day, this really is a safety issue. You can see from the pictures provided, some significantly large limbs have fallen down. I can see the definite concern during some windstorms that those potentially can come down as well. So, you know, that's really the, the main driver for why I'm in, in favor of this application.
I agree. Thank you. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion for this case? Mr. Neely, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Rogers Mobile Home Parks Incorporated and Faith Farrell owners at 23 Cheryl Street, Sheet D, Lot 107, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-115 subsection A subsection 1, to work in the 75-foot prime wetland buffer of the Nashua River to remove two pine trees. This is located in the R9 Zone in Ward 5. We find that this is listed in the table of uses. This will not create any undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. This will not overload public water drainage or sewer or other municipal systems. We find that special regulations are fulfilled. We do have some requests from the Conservation Commission. I believe there's one bullet point specifically. In addition, we find that an arbor, an arborist made several recommendations, which the applicant is going to follow up on. This will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of residents. In fact, we find for safety reasons that it is a good idea to prune these trees. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. McCarron, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously. As you heard us say, and continue to say, there's a 30-day window of appeal. You're more than welcome to, though, proceed with, with your efforts. If there was something that happened, you'll be notified, but otherwise, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Next up is owners Daniel J. and Catherine A. Weiss, at 1 Verona Street, Sheet 101, Lot 138, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-31 to encroach four feet into the six-foot required side yard setback to construct a new eight-foot by 12-foot shed. This is in the RB Zone, Ward 6. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Katie Weiss. I live and own 1 Verona Street, along with my husband. We're here tonight to remove an existing shed and put in a new one that is larger. Our lot is on the corner of 1 Verona Street and Sarasota Ave, so it has two frontages. So can't put the shed really in the front of the, front setback area. So we have it, right now it's existing in the back corner. If you take a look at the GIS, it shows the location of the shed. It's on the west side of the property, and my neighbor has a garage right next to it. So it's kind of tucked away. The driveway is located off of Sarasota Ave, and our house is located on the east side of the property facing Verona Street. Our lot is about 50 feet by 100 feet. If you take a look at the plan, if you have to flip around, because it's opposite direction, you can see in the top right corner, which is the southwest corner, you can see the existing shed. It's six by eight. And on that west side, it's about .8 feet from the property line right now. The neighbor has like a little one-and-a-half-foot wall that runs along length of the property with a chain link on top of it, and then it's .8 feet. And then our six-by-eight shed is right there. So we're here tonight to ask for a variance for that west-side setback to allow two feet instead of six. So we'd be encroaching four feet into that setback. There are a lot of other properties, as you can see in the GIS map, that have sheds and garages within the setbacks. It's very common in this location. And the reason we're looking for a larger shed is because right now we have all of our bikes on the front porch, and some of my kids' toys are out, and there's no place to put them. So we'd like to have a little bit of extra room to do that. And if we were to move the shed all the way outside of the setbacks, we really do lose a good portion of our yard, because it is so small. So basically, what I'm asking today is to be allowed to go four feet within that west-side setback. Do you need me to read all of the criteria, the five criteria? No. Okay. That's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you. Hang on, see if the board has any questions. No, you can have a seat. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of this application at 1 Verona Street? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition for the case at 1 Verona Street? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts, comments? Mr. Boucher?
I'm going to support the application for the reasons of, there's, again, this is a corner lot, which is a little unique when we're looking at other issues with setbacks and so forth. But the existing shed, with the current existing shed in that location, the fact that, that, to me, the most important thing was that it's going to be detrimental to neighbors, because there's a garage right on the other side of the property line. So I think it's reasonable for, for the request. The shed's going to be a little larger. So again, to meet the setbacks, the shed would, in this property, almost be in the middle of the usable yard. So I don't think that, it is unreasonable for what they're asking for. So I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. McCarron?
I also support the application. Pretty clearly, a shed is a normal and reasonable use, a customer use in a residential area. It seems as though almost every lot in this area has a shed or a garage that's either within the setback or right on the property line. So that's obviously the common condition in the, in the neighborhood, and the shed proposed is a reasonable size. For all those reasons, I support the application.
Yeah, I'll just quick comment also. Yeah, I'm supportive. And then the nice thing is, even though it's just a minor thing, there's still a little bit less encroachment than what has been existing. So it's, you know, that's helpful, too. But I think even, even without that, I think, as noted, and it was a key thing for me also, was that this is so common in this neighborhood, it's not an unusual situation. Would somebody like to make a motion for this case? Mr. McCarron, go ahead. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that the application of Daniel and Catherine Weiss for 1 Verona Street, Sheet 101, Lot 138, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-31 to encroach four feet into the six-foot required side yard setback to construct a new eight-by-12 shed be approved. That's in the RB Zone in Ward 6. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We, we find that overall the use proposed is a reasonable use. The shed is a modest size. It's a corner lot and a fairly small lot, so putting the shed in a location that would meet the setbacks would, you know, significantly intrude in the backyard. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow reasonable use of the property. It will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to the public interest. We'd also note that we found that most of the lots in the surrounding area seem to have sheds that are either within the setback or on the property line, and that we found that substantial justice would be done.
Thank you. And second, Mr. Boucher. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously. Similar comment is the 30-day window of appeal, but you're more than welcome to proceed with your project. Move right into the next case is Albert F. Monaco, owner, 39 Amherst Street, Sheet 63, Lot 27. The request is for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to construct an attached accessory in-law dwelling unit on the second floor above the existing garage. This is in the RB Zone, Ward 3. Welcome. If you can say your name and address for the record.
Al Monaco, 39 Amherst Street.
All right. Tell us about what you're doing, and the floor is yours.
Sure. If you see the drawings in front of you, it's a proposed ADU over the existing garage. It's attached to the home now. It'll have its own entrance that's already existing in the garage, so we're not putting any other doors on the exterior of the home. It's just going to change just according to just how those drawings are. And it's really, it's mostly, I want to put it up there for my father, so that he's kind of moving on, getting a little bit older, and I want to have a place for him when it's time for him to, when I got to care for him. Does that answer your question?
Pretty much. To me, it's really, you're, you know, you have a pretty complete application, and appreciate all that. You've already signed the affidavit, which is really kind of covers the, all the special conditions for this. So that appears to be met, which is a significant part of this. So, yeah, I'll just see if the board has any questions for you.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Laino?
The one thing that I, maybe I'm, I'm missing it, but one of the requirements, Number Eight, an interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit. Is there one? And where is it?
Yes, sir, there is. It goes from the existing garage into the existing home. So if you were to walk into the garage, that goes into the existing home. And there's also an exterior door to the left of that door that goes outside. Does that answer that question?
Just, Mr. Falk, is, is that an acceptable thing? I mean, I know we've had some cases before where the entrance was through a garage, and we, we had some issues with that. But, but this is okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
I'm not sure if it matters. It's a fire-rated door, and when we put the garage on, we had planned on putting this room above. Originally, that was the drawings. So it already has fire-rated sheet rock going up over the ceiling, going to the existing area, or to the proposed addition, and also on that door going into the home.
Okay. That's, that's not our concern, but, but it's good to know. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Sillie?
Yeah. I'm pretty sure that this isn't here, but just to make sure, is there egress onto Artillery Lane from the garage, or any other way through this new ADU?
Yes, sir, there is. There's an overhead garage door and an existing man door that goes onto Artillery Lane.
Great. Thank you.
Looks like that's it for questions from the board. You can have a seat. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Would anybody else like to testify or comment on, in favor of 39 Amherst Street? Seeing none? Is there anybody present who has questions, concerns, or opposition to 39 Amherst Street? We do have two correspondences, emails that we had received. I'll just try to read those into the record quick. First one is from Deborah Brown at 10 Artillery Lane. "I'm ready to say I'm opposed to the building of the in-law apartment 39 Amherst Street. This will depreciate our property values of the single-family home. We have one window in our bedroom which looks out over their garage. We have a decent view of the trees in the park, as well as get some nice sun into the bedroom. The building will block the sun and view that we have. I do not want to look out the window from my bed to look into someone else's rooms, or have a stranger looking into my bedroom. That is how close this will be to our home. We will also lose any in-all privacy from our, for our upstairs deck, as the proposed building will be right alongside our deck. I do not wish to sit on my deck and be able to see into their house. He has a large space with a basement, and the garage is finished into a gym. Why doesn't he put an in-law apartment into one of those spaces? Thank you." And then the other correspondence is from, "I, Michael Brown of 10 Artillery Lane. I totally object to the request for an in-law apartment to be built above the garage at 39 Amherst Street. As it will lower my property value and resale value as a single-family home. My other concerns being, I do not want them being able to look into my bedroom windows. This addition will also block my view of the trees, Holman Stadium, and the afternoon sunshine into the bedroom. So we have a deck on the backside of my house that I enjoy now without neighbors watching me. He just built this big garage. Why can't he put the in-law apartment in the garage? Or in his basement also would make it easier for in-laws to access rather than climbing two flight of stairs to gain access. Thank So, Mr. Monaco, you can come back and reply regarding that testimony, if you wish, in rebuttal?
So if you look at the, the drawing there, it really doesn't change. It does change the aesthetics. It's a flat roof now, but we put a, like a 12 pitch on it, so they can still see everything that they want to see. And there's no windows, other than a bathroom window, that wouldn't really be visible. It's up high in the bathroom. It's not intended for looking in or out of. And there's no other windows on that side of the home. So nobody will be looking in their home. And as it is now, there's a porch that's 20 feet away from their bedroom window, and that's been there for, wherever long the home's been there.
All right. Thank you. Okay. I think that will close the public hearing on the case, and we'll open the public meeting. Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of this application. Once again, a very complete application. Thank you, Mr. Monaco, for doing that. You know, I, I did take a look at the, the two letters from the butter, and when you look at the rear of Mr. Monaco's house, realistically, Number 10 Artillery is to the left. There's still a ton of room separation there. You got a whole driveway. I was obviously concerned that maybe they were right up against each other as I was reading these letters about looking into the windows, and, and I don't have that concern, especially after Mr. Monaco's presentation. It's just going to be one small bathroom window. Realistically, this is a pretty straightforward ADU application. Trying to get a parent-to-age in place. We've been encouraging these type of developments here in Nashua. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? All right. Okay. Would somebody like to, Mr. Laino, thank you.
I want to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Albert Monaco, address is 39 Amherst Street, Sheet 63, Lot 27, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit on the second floor above the existing garage. This is in the RB Zone, Ward 3. The board finds that this is listed in the table of uses. The board finds that there's no evidence it will create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. It will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal systems. All the special regulations are fulfilled by testimony of the applicant, and the board believes this will not impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of residents. So I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you. And second, by Mr. Neely. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously. Similar notation, there is the 30-day window of appeal, but you are more than welcome to move along with your project now. And good luck, sir. Okay. Our next case is Peter LaHoliere, owner, Chad Brennan, Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLLC, applicant, 89 Gilson Road, Sheet D, Lot 513, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 to exceed the 40% maximum accessory use area, where 40% is allowed, 48% is proposed, to construct a 16-foot by 12-and-a-half-foot shed. This is in the R30 Zone, Ward 5. Welcome. If you could state your name and address for the record, please? Welcome, if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Michael Pluff. I'm a land surveyor with Fieldstone Land Consultants. I'm here tonight to represent a variance application for Peter and Krista LaHoullier, who are the owners of Tax Map Lot D 513, located at 89 Gilson Road. The variance requested is under Part 8, Article 42, Chapter 190, Section 264, under definitions "Use accessory of the City of Nashville Land Use Code to permit an accessory use that exceeds the accessory use percentage." 40% is allowed, which is 636 square feet for this lot. 48% is requested, which is 774 feet, to construct a 198-square-foot storage shed. The subject property consists of 1.26 acres of land with 199.65 feet of frontage along Gilson Road. It's in the R30 zoning district. The primary structure is a single-family residence. It has 1,590 square feet of living area. The property has an existing detached garage structure comprised of 576 square feet. Mr. and Mrs. LaHoullier request relief from the 40% restriction to construct a 16-foot by 12-foot, 5-inch storage shed on their property. The proposed shed will meet all setback requirements. The majority of the surrounding properties contained enclosed storage areas or garages, but are not considered accessory because they are attached to the primary structure. The subject property has well-in areas that limit the placement of the leach field when it was constructed, which limited the placement of the garage when it was built. This drove the garage to be constructed detached, therefore considered an accessory use. When you evaluate the proposed use from this standpoint, it's certainly consistent with the surroundings. The variance request is for an increase in accessory use area from 40% to 48%. The total primary area, which would be only a 1.4% of the total area of the parcel. Another special condition of the property is that it has a high groundwater table, which results in the primary structure being built with a crawl space rather than a basement, which limits the storage inside the structure of the primary structure. So, in summary, we believe that for these reasons mentioned above, the wetloos location, the septic location, the detached garage, and being accessory and the lack of the structure due to the high-water table, we believe these special conditions lead to a possible variance of an accessory use percentage for this lot. With that, I'll certainly answer any questions, or I can go through the criteria, but I'm pretty sure that's been answered already.
Yeah, I think you're, the application's quite complete, so let's just see if the board has any questions or comments. Yeah, I think, I think we're good, thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of the 89 Gilson Road application? Seeing not anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this case at 89 Gilson Road. All right, we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Comments? Mr. McCarr?
I just support the application. You know, this is kind of one of those cases where pretty clearly, if the house were bigger, we wouldn't be here. If the garage were attached instead of detached, we wouldn't be here. But I think, I think the purpose of this regulation is to prevent lots from being overpouted and reducing open space. Pretty clearly with a one-and-a-quarter acre lot, there's plenty of open space. This lot would not impact it, and I think there was a good explanation as to why the detached, the garage had to be detached because of the location of the leach field. So overall, for all those reasons, I support the application.
Thank you, Mr. Neely.
In addition to what Mr. McCarr said, I find it fascinating that there's no basement in this house due to the water table. I mean, to take away the, the opportunity to store stuff in the basement's a big deal. To, to let them have a shed is a very easy solution. The leach field is in a very interesting place, and at the end of the day, most of this property is hidden behind a wall of trees. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you. Yeah, likewise, I mean, I think, you know, this, we see this, this is a theme. We've seen a lot of these cases that are like this, where, you know, there's a big lot, the house is maybe relatively small, the garage is detached, and we end up with these calculations that it just, it's, it doesn't really seem like it applies well for the situation. Obviously, like you noted, Mr. McCarr, the crowding is what we're really trying to, I think, was the main intent and purpose of the ordinance, so, yeah, so thank you very much. This seems like a very reasonable and normal use, so. Anybody here to offer a motion for this case? Mr. Neely, thank you.
I would like to make a motion to approve the variance for Peter LaHoullier, owner, Chad Brannan, Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLLC applicant, 89 Gilson Road, Sheet D, Lot 513, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 to exceed the 40% maximum accessory use area. 40% allowed, 48% proposed, to construct a 16-foot by 12-and-a-half-foot shed. This is located in the R30 zone in Ward 5. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. The board did have discussion, found that the high-water table has affected their ability to build a basement, to have any type of storage. The shed would assist with their storage area. In addition, the garage was offset due to the leach field, once again, due to the water placement on the property. This property has an irregular shape, with quite a bit of it negatively affected by water tables. This is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will not adversely affect the property values of the surrounding parcels. This is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Thank you. Second by Mr. McCarr. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. The usual 30-day window appeal applies, but meanwhile, I could talk with the project. Next up is Ragav Family Revocable Living Trust owners, Priya Ragav applicant, at 20 Cherrywood Drive, Sheet C, Lot 2621, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-25D1 to encroach up to seven feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback to construct a 7-foot by 38-foot front farmer's porch. This is in the FUOD zone, Ward 5. Welcome, if you could state your name and address for the record?
Radio Valley of 20 Cherrywood Drive.
All right. If you want to tell us about the application and what you're trying to do and why?
We're just trying to make a farmer's porch, similar to those houses that are surrounding the whole neighborhood. And the, the setback line says that we didn't have the space. We just had to fill out the variance application to get approved for that space.
Okay. The board have questions? All right, I think you can have a seat, and we'll see if anybody else has testimony. Anybody else to speak in favor of the 20 Cherrywood case? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition for the 20 Cherrywood Drive case? All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There was a...
Oh, yeah. Sorry, thank you. Yeah, I'll quick read that into the record. My apologies, I will not be able to attend the hearing on May 14th, since I will be working that day. I have no problem if my neighbor wants to put slash add a farmer's porch at their house. This is from Ann Gurley, R, I'm gonna butcher this, Czechazik, at 26 Hollyok Avenue, and that is in favor, so we do have that. Thank you for that reminder. So, Mr. Laino?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this application. It's a very reasonable use. We get lots of applications for people who want to put farmer's porches on their house. The foundation of this house is, is very close to the lot line. There are many similar porches in the neighborhood, and so I'm in support.
Mr. Neely?
I'm also in support of this application. The, the property lines are certainly not square in any way. Looks like they're right up against the setback lines where the house is. In fact, the farmer's porch is right across the street. You can see what it's gonna look like. Number 21 has a farmer's porch, so, really similar to what's going on in this neighborhood, so I'm also in favor.
Thank you. All right, somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Neely, thank you.
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve the variance for Priya Ragav. The Ragav Family Revocable Living Trust with the owners, Priya Ragav applicant, 20 Cherrywood Drive, Sheet C, Lot 2621, requesting a variance from Land Code, Land Use Code Section 190-25, Subsection D, Subsection 1, to encroach up to seven feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback to construct a 7-foot by 38-foot front farmer's porch. This is located in the FUOD zone, Ward 5. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. The board had, did have discussion. This is an irregular-shaped lot. It has frontage on multiple streets. The house is currently located right up against the 25-foot setbacks, and farmer's porches are common in this neighborhood, so this is definitely not out of character. This is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will not adversely affect the property values of the surrounding parcels. This is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Laino, for the second also. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously. So as noted to the other applicants, there's a 30-day window appeal, but you're welcome to move forward with the project. Good luck. Next up is owner Villaloo LLC, applicant Thomas F. Mossen IV, 106 Lock Street, Sheet 46, Lot 46, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17, Section D, relative to design standards for constructing a new two-family structure in the RC zone, this is in the RC zone, Ward 3. Welcome, if you could state your name and address for the record?
My name's Tom Mossen. I'm representing 106 Lock Street, and I reside at 12 Woodland Drive, Sandown.
Welcome, tell us what you're trying to do and why you're here.
So when we designed this home, we took, in fact, that there was a single-family home there. We made a three-bedroom house that we hoped, duplex that we hoped that families would want to come to, and like all the other condos in that neighborhood, they all have one-car garages, two bedrooms. So we added the second car, hoping that that would, you know, encourage families to stay longer and have a nicer place, also the fact that the park is right behind us. So when we designed it, we didn't think about the condos across the street, single-car garages, two bedrooms, you know, a whole flight upstairs, and put three of them in there. We were thinking more based on the families that could come into the neighborhood, stay longer than the ones that'll go into the other condos that are in the neighborhood. We were also trying to give it some kind of appeal, like the original house, farmer's porch. We wanted some separation from the two families, so that's why we came up with that design. I wasn't aware of the actual ordinance that says they have to meet. Our other alternative is to take away a garage and put them together. Well, that's the only comments I have in regards to that.
I just wanted to check in with Mr. Falk. So is, is, just to clarify on that, that the issue is that it's garages that are connecting the structure versus the dwelling part of the structure?
Correct. It's supposed to be, at least 90% of the walls that touch each other have to be living space, and if you can read and understand 190-17D, that definition, that's where it's supposed to meet. We don't really understand it, I'll be honest. It's a very difficult definition, but that's the general gist of it, is that they have to be on top of one another, or next to each other, with living space, not garages in the middle.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I was trying to understand what, what was meant by design consideration, however that was put, so I appreciate it.
If you know the definition, you know that, that's the paragraph, you know what I'm talking about.
Question? So, I, I think you answered my question, but I just want to confirm on number three for substantial justice. It said that you were looking to sell, and I wasn't sure why, yeah, it sounds like you, this will bring it more in line with the market, because you would try to get some selling and you couldn't...
The owner originally had purchased this home eight years ago, and he was gonna repair it and, you know, have it as a single-family home. The house was beyond repairs. It was vacant for 16 years, so we ended up tearing it down. We looked at options. One option was a three-condex, sort of like the ones that are right across the street. And we look at the park right behind us, and the homeowner, he's, you know, he's owned it for eight years, thinking some family was gonna move into it, so he still has that kind of incentive, that he's thinking families is best suited for that, but no family's gonna stay there long with just a one-car garage. And, so, and we tried to make it, you know, the 12-by-12 decks. We're thinking of, you know, the privacy of two families, giving them a little bit of, you know, access to having their kids in the backyard, sitting on their decks, instead of everybody together. Or if I was to reverse them and put two garages, the farmer's porches would be, you know, you'd be sitting right there with a rail. So it was designed like that. I mean, you know, obviously, if we can't, we could come up with a different design. It would probably be more like the ones that are across the street to fit it in, but that was our thought. That was our thought.
Sounds like due diligence was made here.
Yeah. I, I, we, we're trying to build it as if I wanted to move into it.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I think you can have a seat. Well, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of the application for 106 Lock Street? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition for 106 Lock Street? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Mr. McCarr?
I, I support the application, and I'm gonna confess to not fully understanding the intent of the regulation, but, but if I can imagine what it may mean, there, there are certainly some good examples of two-family dwellings, duplexes, that I think kind of have the appearance of massing of, say, a large, single-family home. I don't know if that's the intention, but in, in this particular case, the, the design seems reasonable, and looking at the surrounding area, there is a really pretty huge variety of building types and massing, ranging from larger commercial buildings to, as was noted, the townhouse groupings, which are really large individual buildings. We have single-family homes, duplexes. So, so in this case, I don't think it would be out of character with the surrounding area, probably not out of character with, you know, some of the immediately adjacent buildings, and from the street at least, whether the walls are connected by a relatively short garage or a more significant amount of living space, I don't think that's perceivable. So for those reasons, I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Sillie?
Yeah, I concur with everything that Mr. McCarr said, and I'm appreciative of what the applicant said. I wasn't sure what the background was in regard to what had been done, so it sounds like there is a foundation for hardship here, given the fact that they've tried so much to get enjoyment out of this property.
Thank you. You know, I'll add, I mean, the other thing is, I feel like it's somewhat compelling, is the fact that with that garage there, it's not an easy way to, I think, do something to make it into a two-family and overcome that garage. I don't know, maybe there would be something about building up and over, and even then, I don't know if it would satisfy, it might, maybe that's the way it would, could work out, but it seems that would be one of those kind of onerous things to put on the applicant to satisfy this criterion, and I think, Mr. McCarr, you did a, a good job of summarizing the variety of structures that are there as well, so, you know, I'm not, not feeling like this... So, you know, I'm not, not feeling like this will stand out as like the one different thing in the place of a bunch of very similar structures, whereas it's going to just be another different structure amongst many other different ones. So, yeah, I guess a long, long way of saying I'm in support of this also. Somebody like to make a motion? Mr. McCarron, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Villaloo, owner, Thomas F. Mossen, applicant, for 106 Lock Street, that Sheet 46, Lot 46, requesting a variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-17D, relative to design standards for constructing a new two-family structure be approved. That's in the RC zone in Ward 3. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. As was noted in the testimony, we found that the applicant did spend a fair amount of time considering how to design something that would be appealing to families and fit in the neighborhood on the lot, and in particular, to provide the additional garage unit, or the garage for each unit, that would be attractive to families, and that it's challenging to meet the regulation. And accommodate that. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It allows for reasonable use of the property. It is a permitted use. It would not adversely affect property values of the surrounding parcels. It would not be contrary to the public interest. We also noted that there are a variety of different building types, sizes, and masses in the neighborhood, and that it would not particularly stand out or appear unusual. We find that substantial justice would be done.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Neal, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously. So there's the 30-day window appeal, but you're welcome to proceed with the project, and good luck.
Thank you.
We're going to take just a very quick break before we get into the final case.
No, yeah, yeah. I need to borrow a pen. You can use, use your pen.
Oh, sure, yeah. Makes sense to me. No, I was thinking the same thing. I was like, if you are a clerk, especially, it covers us for five, and even that's pretty minor business. Yeah, sure.
It might just be the way they have the speakers, but sometimes these microphones, if they're not the right distance, yeah. Okay, yeah.
The challenge now, you know, I need to wait for those guys moving, right?
See you.
See you.
See you next time.
Pretty much, as far as seeking, that's the only thing I like.
We get to see each other first.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll try, yeah.
It might just be the way they have the speakers, but sometimes these microphones, if they're not the right distance, yeah.
The challenge now, you know, I need to wait for those guys moving, right?
See you.
See you next time.
If I can have everybody take their seats.
Yeah, it's the big one.
All right, we are back in session. Mr. Boucher, who I noted earlier, our clerk, who is recusing himself from this case, rather than for him to stay to just do our last bit of housekeeping at the end of our meeting, has left the meeting, and we'll have Mr. Sylvia participating in this case and the final board actions as well at the end of the meeting. So this is, like I noted already, we're not used to, we've, and I've served on this board for quite a few years. We have had very few of these appeals of administrative decision. It's not something that this board has to do very frequently, but we will do our best to get through it, but we will conduct it in the same manner as our normal cases in the sense that the applicant will have up to 15 minutes to present their case, and then anybody that wants to speak in support of the applicant's position will have up to five minutes to speak, and then we'll open it up for anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this request. And then, assuming that, knowing that will be the case, there'll be a final rebuttal where the applicant can come back, and then one person from the opposition, which I would assume most likely will be city staff. But I do want to note that several different things. Obviously, by, based on the number of people in the audience, if everybody wants to use their five minutes, we will have a very long session ahead of us. If you really are just, basically have a position that you want to make clear and known for the record, it's okay to just come up, state your name and address, and you can say, you know, why, you know, as maybe as brief as possible, or that you completely concur one way or the other. So it's not necessary for everybody to basically kind of essentially repeat the same testimony, but you are welcome to use your time, but I would just encourage you, if you also would like to not be here for a few hours, to try to keep your testimony as brief and as focused as possible. I also might end up needing to, if you will, rein some of you in if the discussion gets too far beyond the scope of this, because what this is really about is specifically the administration in the planning department made a decision regarding the usage of this property, and that is what is being appealed. So if the, if the application were to go forward where there's a requirement that if this is upheld, then there would still be a whole zoning board and possibly, I'm not sure if there'd be planning board or not, I think it might just be zoning board, but it would come back here if there was a need for that also. But, so just bear with, bear with us, because this is going to be possibly a little bit tricky, but I just want to try to kind of have everybody set for it, and appreciate your patience as well. So just reread the case into the record. His owner is New Life NH LLC. The applicant is Timothy Bosch, 37 Arrow Lane, Nashua. Regarding, and the address is regarding 16 Archery Lane, and the description, again, is appeal administrative decision relative to an intended use of a property for boarding house/room renting is not permissible under the Land Use Code at 16 Archery Lane. So is Mr. Bosch or his representative here to present the case?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Chris Swinierski. I'm an attorney with Divine Millimet, representing Tim and Andrea Bosch, who live at 37 Arrow Lane. As you know, and just mentioned, the Bosch's filed this appeal before you tonight, although I think you have a pretty good-sized crowd of people who would likely echo their concerns. From a legal perspective, this case is really just about whether or not the sober living home, as it's been deemed, which is proposed for 16 Archery Lane, is a permitted use in the R9 district. Your ordinance says it is not, just as your aldermen have said it was not earlier this evening. Now, from the minutes of a September meeting of the Human Affairs Committee, which is a subcommittee of sorts, it seems that the building department manager and the planning department took it upon themselves to come up with an interpretation of the zoning ordinance that would allow these halfway houses as single-family homes, and that's pretty evident in the minutes of that September 2023 meeting. In that meeting, they acknowledged, specifically the building department manager, that these halfway houses are typically going up where only single families are allowed, and then they determined in that meeting that they would consider these to be single families because they couldn't find a definition of the word "family" or "families" anywhere. I think that's kind of hard to believe. I think that's really ridiculous. The word "family" is in every single dictionary. More importantly, the word "family" is precisely defined in your zoning ordinance. That's what we have to follow. Your definition of "family" is, I quote, "an individual or two or more persons related within the second degree of kinship, or by marriage, or adoption, living together as a single housekeeping unit, including necessary domestic help, such as nurses or servants, not to exceed three in number." That's a pretty easy definition to understand. I think we all know what a "family" is, and I think it's highly unreasonable to pretend otherwise. The proposed sober living facility is not claimed by the applicants to be a family because it's not a family. It's quite obvious. No one's saying it is. But now, your ordinance does also define a halfway house, and that definition reads, and I'll quote, "any residence where two or more people reside for the purpose of their rehabilitation, behavioral modification, or therapeutic counseling." Any of those three. And then the ordinance gives examples of specific halfway houses, saying what things may be considered a halfway house. It seems, although I'm not completely sure, that the building department and the planning department thought that they could use that list of examples of what can be a halfway house to say that anything not in that example list is therefore not a halfway house. That doesn't even work because the proposed use is in that example use, and that's specifically not what the ordinance says. The proposed sober, sober living home is a residential facility where people get treatment. They offer on their public website that they publish 11 different types of services. So it's hard to say this is anything but a halfway house under your definition. And we have case law to confirm that city officials can't call halfway houses something else just to suit political desires or political whims. That case is St. Ange v. Oberden from 2020. It's fairly recent. Yet while we have the case law that says you can't do that, that's exactly what the building department and the planning department did. Can't do that as a matter of law. Your ordinance only allows a halfway house in the R9 zone if the planning board grants a conditional use permit, and that's after evaluating certain criteria that are enumerated in your ordinance. That's the only board that has that authority, and I believe that's an innovative land use control as well, so for sure, it is the planning board's authority and nobody else's. The planning department and the building department, they don't have the authority to change that. Only the residents of the city can change that, and that has to happen through the legislative process of a zoning amendment. There's, there's nobody else in the city who can, who can change the laws. That's a legislative function, and we can't take away that right from the residents of this city or any other city or town. That is a very, very important right. Now, this board is actually the only board within the city that has the authority to interpret the zoning ordinance. As you mentioned in the beginning, Mr. Chairman, this is a quasi-judicial board, and that is your role to interpret the zoning ordinance. And of course, we know that your interpretation has to have a written decision explaining that interpretation. I think that explanation is pretty easy, as we've just discussed. The proposed use, very precisely defined as a halfway house under your ordinance. A halfway house is not permitted in the R9 district unless it receives a conditional use permit from the planning board, who has to find the specific criteria listed for that permit. It really is that simple from a legal perspective, and I think, just as your alderman said as well. This use is not allowed in this place, and it may be a beneficial use to the community. It may be a great and noble use. I don't know. may be considered a halfway house. It seems, although I'm not completely sure, that the building department and the planning department thought that they could use that list of examples of what can be a halfway house to say that anything not in that example list is therefore not a halfway house. That doesn't even work because the proposed use is in that example use. And that's specifically not what the ordinance says. The proposed sober sober living home is a residential facility where people get treatment. They offer on their public website that they publish 11 different types of services. So it's hard to say this is anything but a halfway house under your definition. And we have case law to confirm that city officials can't call halfway houses something else just to suit political desires or political whims. That case is St. Ange v. Oberden from 2020. It's fairly recent. Yet while we have the case law that says you can't do that, that that's exactly what the building department and the planning department did. Can't do that as a matter of law. Your ordinance only allows a halfway house in the R9 zone if the planning board grants a conditional use permit. And that's after evaluating certain criteria that are enumerated in your ordinance. That's the only board that has that authority, and I believe that's an innovative land use control as well. So for sure, it is the planning board's authority and nobody else's. The planning department and the building department, they don't have the authority to change that. Only the residents of the city can change that, and that has to happen through the legislative process of a zoning amendment. There's there's nobody else in the city who can who can change the laws. That's a legislative function. And we we can't take away that right from the residents of this city or any other city or town. That is a very, very important right. Now, this board is actually the only board within the city that has the authority to interpret the zoning ordinance. As you mentioned in the beginning, Mr. Chairman, this is a quasi judicial board, and that is your role to interpret the zoning ordinance. And and of course, we know that your interpretation has to have a written decision explaining that interpretation. I think that explanation is pretty easy, as we've just discussed. The proposed use, very precisely defined as a halfway house under your ordinance. A halfway house is not permitted in the R9 district unless it receives a conditional use permit from the planning board, who has to find the specific criteria listed for that permit. It really is that simple from a legal perspective, and I think just as your alderman said as well. This use is not allowed in this place, and it may be a beneficial use to the community. It may be a great and noble use. I don't know. That's not for me to decide. That's not for the ZBA to decide, not for the planning board, sorry, the planning department or the building department to decide. The planning board can decide whether to grant permission for that in the R9 zone. And that's the only board that can do it. And they have to do it according to the law. And the law, the ordinance, is decided by the residents of the city. Case really is that simple. There there is no way to move this forward from here without an application to the planning board. That's all I have for you right now. I know I have more of my 15 minutes left, so I'd like to reserve those for the rebuttal at the end. And I think there are a lot of other people here who'd like to give you their take on it as well. But I'll certainly answer any questions you may have for me right now or at any other time.
Mr. Seliger.
Okay. I'm sure I'll think of some other questions later, but one I have right now. It seems like the key thing differentiating a halfway house from just congregate living is the treatment. Would you agree with that?
No.
No? Could you explain a little bit more?
Family.
Okay.
The only permitted use here that is remotely relevant is a single family dwelling unit, I think you call it, and family is the key word. So it's not just the treatment itself. Treatment is something that is in the examples of what is a halfway house, and those examples are not a definitive list of the only things that are a halfway house. Those are the things that may be a halfway house. They use the word include. The word include does not mean that these are the only things that are a halfway house. That's just regular English comprehension.
So it could be related, okay. I just wanted to expand on that, because then also in the ordinance, when the definition of family talks about household and unrelated household members, and you can have up to, I believe, 300 square feet per person. So let's just say someone bought this house not for the sake of a sober living home, but using it for student housing for nearby river college. Would that be similar here, or is it a key thing, the sober living situation?
Well, does your use table allow an unrelated housing unit or whatever that is? I don't think it does. That's a different use.
Okay.
I think we don't have any other questions for you right now, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So any, we can start to take testimony from those that are in support of of this appeal. Also, we we have gotten many emails over the last couple of weeks or so. If you are here and giving verbal testimony and you remember, you might let us know if you've also already sent us an email. It might just help us in terms of keeping track of of some of the communications and that some of it might be a little bit redundant, or you're welcome to refer to the emails as well. But we'll start to, again, take testimony and see. Sorry, welcome to the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, sir. Corey Downs. I live in 12 Bacon Street, Purple, Mass., but I'm supporting my clients here today. I'm a real estate agent in the Nashua, New Hampshire market specifically. So I just wanted to come here and say my piece real quick. I'll keep it as short as I can. Well, first off, thank you for allowing me to speak today. As I mentioned, my name's Corey Downs, real estate agent in New Hampshire with my office based in Nashua, and I have a property listing currently in this neighborhood under contract at 6 James Street. It's this last point that brings me here today at the request of my clients, the sellers, because the outcome of this meeting will have a direct impact on their current transaction and undoubtedly every transaction in this neighborhood in the future. We listed 6 James Street for sale on April 18th at $439,000 in an extremely competitive New Hampshire housing market, and despite two extremely busy busy open open houses over that following weekend, we only netted one offer. Every party that came through attending our open house had the same question, what's going on with the property at 16 Archery? And upon my explanation that they had received a permit to implement a sober group home at the residence or a halfway house, however you'd like to term it, the party's demeanor noticeably shifted and interest waned. After a number of follow up calls to these parties over the next couple of days, it's made clear to me that this was the primary deterrent for nearly all the attendees, even with the offer we received, although at asking price, it had an inspection contingency, which, although uncommon of late, is not out of the ordinary, but one other contingency that was very out of the norm, a contingency that reads, "This offer is contingent upon the outcome of the ZBA appeal hearing on May 14th." Meaning in layman's terms, if the issuance of the permit is upheld, they will retract their offer, and my clients, the current owners of 6 James Street, will be back to square one, trying to sell a property that people are actively avoiding because of the permit in question tonight. To be thorough and fair, I checked the other properties that were listed in Nashua in the same timeframe as ours, just to make sure this wasn't a citywide problem, and it wasn't. It's clear the issue is unique to this neighborhood. There were six other properties that I'll quickly synopsize for you that came on the market around the same time and went under contract with multiple offers, less contingencies, and certainly no contingency regarding a zoning board meeting. These properties are 21 Fairmount, 4 Claremore, 81 Searl, 72 Gillis, 25 Hazel, and 3 Cliff, all of which are still pending. Unfortunately, I don't have closing numbers for you, but I can tell you via conversations with the agents, they did have multiple offers, had suitable housing contingencies just like our own, and should close before us, which our proposed closing date is June 18th. That's assuming we actually get there. Naturally, all these properties haven't closed yet, but final sale amounts will be made public shortly, and we can see the true magnitude of the impact, the on pricing that this permit has had. But for now, I think the above data is fairly telling. In closing, I just ask you to deeply consider the impact that this decision will have on the value of the other 30 plus homes in the neighborhood and the wider reaching ramifications that it will have on the surrounding community as a whole. I know you guys aren't here to talk about property values, but importantly, the just the ability to transact any deals in this neighborhood. So thank you for your consideration. Have a great night.
Thank you.
And I'll say if you have any questions.
All right. Next, anybody else want to come up?
Anyone else?
Are we allowed to voice concerns yet?
No, this is, yeah, sorry, we're just for those in support of the appeal. Again, state your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Cosgrove, 43 Arrow Lane in Nashua. Assembled for you representatives of a family oriented residential neighborhood. Now, I've been in my house since 1977. Putting politics aside, we're all concerned about additional vehicle traffic, about more than usual cars in the area, parking issues. Since we have an ordinance that states no overnight parking on the street and no parking from 7:00 to 10:00 a.m. during school days. Parking and additional cars are also a problem because we have families that ride their bikes, walk, walk their dogs, and so forth around the neighborhood. Being so close to BG, we feel we're in a no drug zone. So what happens if these young people go off the wagon? Who's going to monitor them? We have college, the the high school kids that come through our neighborhood. We also, I have a dead end street adjacent to my property. They'll be an excellent place for them to gather in the evening, to smoke, leave trash, and so forth. Who's going to monitor this? Since certification isn't required, supposedly no 24-hour counselors will be present to monitor the activities in this in this residence. We feel that we have a safe neighborhood. But if these young people have some type of conviction behind them, and they go off the wagon, where are they going to be finding their money? Are they going to be breaking into our homes, into our cars? This is a big safety issue for this family oriented residential neighborhood. So we're against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other testimony in, come on up? And if you want to kind of, if if you want to queue up and wait near the door, that's fine as well.
Hi, my name is Julie Barelli, and I live at 25 Arrow Lane. And I want to say that when you you go and you're sober, you need to be honest about things. That's how you you learn. I have a lot of family members that went through detox, rehab, sober houses. My daughter-in-law was at one of the rehabs in Nashua. I, they started out with a lie. They started building. They didn't have a permit. They didn't come and say, you know what, this is what we're doing, and and make us feel comfortable. They didn't do anything. And we have children running around. We don't have to, we have the whole neighborhood, we 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 have little bonfires, we're we're, we are a family, the the whole neighborhood. I'm not, I'm not making it up, but we we do walk, and little kids run around this circle through James Street, and it's away from the street, and we don't have to keep eyes on them. Every house will look out, everybody, everybody is like, the kids are free. And I know because I have a lot of people that that used in my family, and you can go off the wagon. And what what if there's a little kid, and they have a person come down the street that they have drugs or something? I know I'm sad, and I'm sorry, but like I said, I have no, I feel, but this isn't the place. And I I'm really sorry to say that about that, because, like I said, it's really close to me, but it's really not the street to have people coming and going, you know, cars. The only cars that come down our street is people that live there. We don't have cars going around. Our neighborhood would be destroyed, having people, I I believe it's 28 days, coming and going. That's not a family. It it just, I'm sorry, I'm sorry I say that about about the home, but please, I I'm begging. It will change, our kids won't be running around, they'll be stuck with a parent. And I mean, they ride their bikes, their scooters, there'll be cars coming through. We don't know, you know, what speed. It it's it's dangerous. I I I beg, I beg you, please. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm back. Cindy Rosenwald, 101 Wellington Street. I find I know most of you. I'm the state senator for District 13, which includes Ward 6. And I know there's a lot of concern in the neighborhood. I have a concern about the number of cars that could be parking, trying to park at this property, because the city has said it would allow 10 residents. And I can't think of a lot of driveways that have room for 10 cars, and it's not a place where there's on-street parking. But I do want to correct one, I think, incorrect statement. If a residential program provides treatment, it is licensed by the state of New Hampshire. If it is a residential setting that doesn't provide treatment, that's what a sober home is. There may be some staff, some hours of the day, but there are not clinical services provided on site. So just for clarity. But I've, I have heard from the residents of this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Britton, 7 Huntingdon Lane, Nashua, New Hampshire. I live in a neighborhood similarly zoned as Arrow and Archery Lane. I have many concerns about the sober living home facility planned for this residential single family neighborhood. It is my understanding that there will be 12 to 18 adults living under one roof, who will be responsible for their own transportation. This will cause a significant increase in traffic and deem the streets less safe for children to play, walk, and ride their bikes. It will make this area a less desirable place to raise a family. And as a result, have a negative impact on property values. Further, if this can happen in this R9 neighborhood, then what's to stop it from happening in other R9 neighborhoods? Homeowners will need to worry about every for sale sign being posted in their area. If I were researching for a place to live and raise my family, I would think twice about moving to Nashua if this goes through. Thank you.
My name's Winifred Cosgrove. I live at 43 Arrow Lane, at the corner of Arrow and Archery. 16 Archery Lane was purchased by New Life New Hampshire LLC, as mentioned by the alderman. That's a limited liability company. The house was purchased as a business venture to lease or rent it out to make money and a profit for the business. Nobody connected to the company will live there. It will not be occupied by a family who plan to stay for an extended time. Most single family homes do not house 12 to 18 or more people. I fear the house will not be maintained and will come into disrepair, as the owner will care more about profit. Part of the property is actually within the prime salmon brook wetland area, where restrictions will apply. Geese recently have been nesting in this area. Endangered turtles come up to lay their eggs. Many other wildlife are seen. Salmon brooks should be protected. There are five homes on Archery Lane that abut the brook, and at least two have had water issues in their basement. Mold was noticeable in the basement of 16 Archery Lane during the recent estate sale. And two beds are now planned to be put down there. Mold may be a health issue for any residents there. Street parking should not be allowed or granted, as the, in the hours mentioned previously. Other property owners are not allowed to do so, and they should not be allowed to do so. Parking should be enforced, and if cars park in the street despite city rules, they should be ticketed and, if necessary, towed. Street parking will obstruct visibility and make it difficult for emergency vehicles to get through. A man would have to get off the garbage truck and simple, and empty barrels by hand as the mechanical arm could not be used. I've seen this and witnessed it in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. You can take that mic out, it's portable, so. Just pull forward, yeah.
Hello, my name is Ben Bosch. Hello, my name is Benjamin Bosch. I live at 37 Arrow Lane. My, I am here tonight to ask you to follow the law and protect my neighborhood. My small neighborhood is a good place to ride bikes and scooters, a good place to play with friends, a good place to live. Please don't let this neighborhood be destroyed. I am scared of what could happen and angry we are still having to fight for this. Again, I do not want my neighborhood to be destroyed.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello. Is that working?
Yeah, just speak as loud as you can.
Hello, my name is Jackson Bosch. I live at 37 Arrow Lane. I live at 37 Arrow Lane. I am disappointed in the city of Nashua for allowing the illegal usage of 16 Archery Lane. The people in this house would not be a family. They would be individual people living there for an unspecified amount of time. Our neighborhood is fun and we all know each other. We all feel happy and safe in our current neighborhood, and we do not want it to change. This is an unsafe use of this property, and I'm scared about the future of our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Britton. I live at 7 Huntingdon Lane in Nashua. It's my understanding that the city of Nashua's zoning ordinance are meant, are rules meant to protect and enhance the value of property and to prevent the incompatible ability of inappropriate uses. The board must be aware of the property damages that will occur in this neighborhood and of the potential, if the proposed facility at Archery Lane is allowed to go forward. My wife and I also live in an R9 zone neighborhood, and if the code definition of detached single-family residence can be adjusted to whatever the city wants, then homeowners in Nashua need to worry. We all live in an ordered society and play by the rules, or we all lose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Ward. I live 5 James Street with my wife Sharon, and we live there for about, it's about 50 yards away from 16 Archery. We've been there for 22 years. I don't know that I can add any more to the legal argument or state anything that's going to change anybody's mind, but I wanted to air just a few things for you guys to consider. We are not against people getting a second or third chance at life or mending their ways. The world needs halfway houses and sober houses, just like we need prisons and hospitals, but it defies common sense and does not logically follow that therefore a sober house or halfway house should be in every neighborhood. I've worked in law enforcement and the criminal justice system for over 30 years. I've worked as an attorney with the federal prison system for the last 22 years. I know a lot about residential centers and halfway houses. I know people have addictions and disorders, and they need services, and they need assistance. I know who is there. I also know this board or anyone sitting from afar can call this a sober house or a rooming house, but that's just a play with words. This is a halfway house. This is a business being run for profit with no interest by the owner or the property nor the management company that will oversee it in the community and the people and the families that live on Archery, Arrow, and James Street. These rehabilitation centers cause security and safety issues to any neighborhood. They historically lead to illegal activity and police calls. To call a sober house or a rooming house for purposes of squeezing it into an R9 single-family residential area is being intellectually dishonest. Calling it such does not change the fact that it is what it is. It's a halfway house. If it looks like a duck and whacks like a duck, it is a duck. Another point that seems to be lost here, this owner does not come to you with clean hands. He did not properly seek a permit in the first place, and after the city issued a stop-work order, and he was advised of the extra steps that would be required for him to make it a 12- or 18-bed halfway house, he instead told you to never mind, "I'll do what I was going to do anyway, and maybe later I'll come back for the permits when I decide to expand." And instead of favoring your residents and protecting the neighborhood, the city said, "Oh, sure, permit approved." And how is this conduct going to be monitored and regulated so that this facility is what he says it is? His conduct and attitude so far would not indicate a desire to comply with the city regulations. My last comment on this is that since we learned of the business plan and the approval by the city for this to happen, I've honestly not talked to a single person that thought this made sense, or that, sure, that works for your neighborhood, nor is it good for any single-family neighborhood like the hundreds of others in Nashua. There are places for halfway houses and rooming houses in the city, as there are many of them already spreading throughout the city, but not in any neighborhood, not in every neighborhood. It makes no sense that this would be approved for the heart of a small three-street neighborhood with 20-plus families and children. I also know firsthand that Bishop Gerton is part of this discussion, and they oppose this. I don't think hundreds of parents sending their children to school each day have knowledge of or expect that the city has approved a halfway house within 400 yards of their school property. And on that point, I would ask each of you to look at your neighborhood and your street and tell us honestly that you would have no problem with this business being established next door to you, or your children, or your parents' homes. If that's the case, then buckle up, because permitting this to happen on Archery opens the door for it to every street in Nashua, including yours. Goodbye, property values. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Andrea Bosch. I'm from 37 Arrow Lane. I didn't really want to follow Patrick, but here I am. Allowing 16 Archery to proceed as planned sets a really bad precedent for the city. When we allow rules to be broken in one neighborhood, what is stopping you from breaking these rules in every neighborhood? Every property value on Archery, Arrow, and James is going to decrease. So when this happens all over Nashua, the property value loss in Nashua would be exponential. And I can guarantee that people in this neighborhood will be moving out if 16 Archery proceeds as planned. Think of that all over Nashua and how detrimental that would be for our city.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Connie Paquin, and I abut 16 Archery Lane. I live at 24 Archery Lane. And I just want to say I'm totally against this because of this neighborhood. For a while, we were all old people. I've been there since, my family's been in this home for 59 years. Next year, make 60. One of the few beginning people. We used to have a lot of elderly in our neighborhood. Now it's all changed to all young kids. We have three new babies in the neighborhood. We have at least 25 children that are out there every day, playing basketball, riding their bikes, walking the dogs, and I just find that it's not good for this neighborhood. So I am definitely against it.
Hey, good evening. My name is Patty Ladue, and I'm a Nashua native. I've lived in that, on Archery Lane, my parents did too, for over 60 years, probably 62 years. And, well, I should put, wait a minute. Anyway, we had, I wanted to express my deep concern for our wonderful 1950s, '60s neighborhood. There's a gal in the audience here, her uncle and aunt built this neighborhood. I know she's here as support for us. I've always loved Nashua and fortunate to have joined all the wonderful people and local businesses. History of Nashua, I actually have collected Nashua membership for 35 years. My dad was in local politics here, a commissioner of Board of Public Works, a delegate on the state legislature, and I'm a life member of the Historical Society. I love Nashua. I worked on one of the Nashua history books, In Time and Place, with Mary Goyette. And I also was fortunate enough to serve on our wonderful year-long Millennium Committee. It was wonderful. Met a lot of great people. In January this year, we found out by accident that our wonderful neighbor, Preston Stanley, last year died. Had his house was going up for sale. It sold, and this gentleman that bought it in Massachusetts, as you've already heard from fairly other people, he wanted to do it, he buys cash, he rehabs the inside, and then he asks for forgiveness later, which is lousy, the employee permits. So, anyway, and then he becomes just the landlord of the house, and there are good programs. We all need these programs, the alcohol and drug recovery programs, we do. I know we do. Most people I know have know somebody, or somebody's been touched with it, in family or whatever, friends. So it's very important, but you really have to look, we live in a very, just a U-shaped property, excuse me, this little neighborhood, I know, I've lived there since 1960. We used to block off and have James Street, have block parties. So it was a very intimate group, and it has been through the years. And, let's see, what else was I going to say? Needs to be looked at, yeah, the location, but, let me see here. People, oh, you didn't pull permits, I know, I got a little lost. Oh, the house is only a Cape Cod-style house. That's it. Our alderman, who came over right away, he was great, Mr. Thibodeau, and he met with us in the street in the winter, and he said, "Oh, my God, this is the house they're going to do this with? This is crazy." You know, he was just appalled at the size of it, with 18 women and nine bedrooms. And so, that didn't make any sense, and we were all, I was like, I was stage-struck on the whole thing, to be honest with you. Let's see. Oh, I think we need to be protect, I want to go to protection, get protection from the city. I feel like it's the opposite. They've been fighting us, and I don't understand why they take the man who has bought the property, and then they seem to want to just railroad us, and we've been here, I love Nashua, I just told you all the things I've done, and they want to, they want to, it's sort of like, it seems like they want to take his side and let it happen, and I just don't understand the whole thing. You've got to look at the whole situation, and we already know the logistics of it, you heard it from several people on, it doesn't belong in our neighborhood. Let's see here. Oh, I just wanted to say too, that our property values will definitely depreciate, at the least 20%, up to 40%. I've read extensively since January, made myself crazy over it, had tons of anxiety, which this shouldn't have happened. You get to an age where you're retired and you want to have fun, and then you see this happen, it's like, we're going to have to move. My neighbors, who are wonderful back there, just moved in last year, haven't even had their babies yet, and they said, "Oh, if we knew this happened, we wouldn't even," so they're probably going to put their house for sale. It's not good. It really isn't. And please, you've got to understand how much I love Nashua, but it's changing with dynamics of it, the demographics of it, everything. We all know that. We see it, the old Nashua people have been here for years, and...
If you can try to wrap up, there's just a few seconds left of your time.
Oh, okay. So basically, I guess, and I'm sorry, I know I'm kind of, but I've been the old, probably the longest one besides Bill Wright in this neighborhood, so, I don't know. He did have a property in Worcester, Mass, you might hear it from somebody else, that went awry terribly. The cops were there 47 times to the house. They ruined the whole house, the neighborhood. They finally, the police got to the bottom of it.
That's your time.
That he ended up, okay, that he ended up, there was nobody running the house, and all the addicts were running it. That was the same gentleman.
Thank you.
Ian Bauker. I'm the owner of 15 Archery Lane, which is directly opposite the property. I'm going to keep it really short. I'm opposed to this. I purchased this property in 2016. My daughter and my grandson live in that property. I'm really not happy about what's going to happen with that property. It's, the traffic is one thing. I understand that we need these sober living facilities, but I just, this neighborhood is not the place for it. It's very tight-knit, it's very small, and it needs to be squashed. So, thank you, and I hope that you make the right decision.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dave Fredette, Forehand, we David Dry, Nashua. I am not on the butter of the neighborhood, but I grew up in this neighborhood, and I'm one of the old Nashuans, as Patty mentioned a second ago. I'll be quick, because I know you're all tired. I agree with the applicant's attorney 100%. This is too important to happen through an internal decision. This needs to be taken up by the Board of Aldermen, the people who represent us and vote on it. I think this is, this is the biggest investment people have in their lives are their homes, and this will affect it. So I'm totally against it, and I support the attorney's view on everything he mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Gentlemen, appreciate your time, and I'm not going to spend three or five minutes up here just saying a lot of what's already been said. I think you guys hear the concerns and everything loud and clear. So my name is Jay O'Connell, 41 Arrow Lane. Sorry, I shouldn't have did that in the beginning. Yeah, so just a little bit about me, I mean, I'm here first off to just kind of communicate my concerns to you guys about this, and certainly then I'm opposed to this coming to our neighborhood. And secondly, just to also confirm, and like, really, a lot of the testimonies about like how close-knit our neighborhood is, our community is, we do fires, we do 4th of July things in the streets, so we're very, very close-knit. All the testimonies you heard about our neighborhood and the dynamic and how beautiful it's been, it's been certainly true. And so I was born and raised in Mass in 2003. You know, I moved over to the border in Nashua, and I've loved Nashua. I've made my home, my family, my precious wife, my four kids, my three dogs and two cats, you know, where we have a whole family, and we were welcomed in Nashua, in this neighborhood. They brought us together, welcomed us with open arms, and I've made my precious family, my living, my whole family dynamic has been Nashua in this neighborhood. And I love it, I cherish it, I value it tremendously, and I have very big concerns about all the things that have been mentioned here about this, so I just want to make sure that was clear, and I feel you guys as a husband, as a father, you know, and as a Nashua resident. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, excuse me, gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight and listening to our concerns. I'm 25 Arrow Lane, my wife Julie spoke first. I just want to parrot a lot of the concerns that the neighborhood does have.
Can you state your name, sorry? Can you state your name now?
Steven Chait.
Thank you.
Sorry. I blew right through it after, and I apologize. So again, 25 Arrow Lane. I'm not going to sit here and parrot all the concerns that we have, but I would do want to bring a couple of concerns up. This whole endeavor started off with a lie. They didn't pull permits. Then all of a sudden, "Oh, we got to pull permits." Say, "Come on, they've done this before, it's not the first rodeo that we're in." They didn't pull permits, they're trying to sneak in. The intent of the usage was never made public, which I'm not sure if they have to or not, but still, it was kind of try to slide into a neighborhood, an otherwise quiet neighborhood. They went to a board meeting, they originally were proposing, I think, 18 beds. "Oh, no, we're going to do 12." Well, what's next? If I came up here and I lied to you, and then I went back on my lie, would you still believe me? What's next? What's going to be the next problem we're going to have? It started off with a lie, it continues to be a lie, we got no understanding of what's going on. The neighborhood, we chose specifically, after due diligence, we have a very young grandchild who likes to come over and play with Nani, and wants to go out in the street and play with the neighborhood kids. If those kids aren't in the neighborhood, what's the children supposed to do? Stay in their yards? That's not what life's about. Life's about going out. Which is sad enough that children today stay in the house and are on their screens. Everybody's got screen time, no one goes out and plays. But we have a neighborhood where our kids go out and play. They actually go out and socialize. Their social media is the neighborhood. But they don't feel safe to be in that neighborhood? What's going to happen? Statu mental. It's just a bad idea. Now, we're not empathetic to the plight of these folks, as my wife indicated. We have family that's gone through this. We understand it. We've been through going to visit, seeing what's going on. We've seen other homes that our loved ones were in. It's not rosy. It's not great. And the majority of the homes that we've seen had a house manager. Now, we're told there's no house manager, so, okay, no house manager, that's great, so to make it more like a family? Who's going to govern, or who's going to watch over what's going on? Who's going to check in on the property to make sure nothing bad's going on? Is there anybody in the city or the state going to come down and do checks? Probably not. That's usually a house manager does. And if there's a house manager there, now it's a commercial piece of property, right? There's just a lot of inconsistencies. We're not against rehabilitation. We want people to get better. This is not the place for it. This is a neighborhood, and you zoned it as such. You zoned it purposeful. There's a reason why it was zoned that way. Not to go, "Well, we can get wishy-washy later." No, it was zoned for a reason, and that's why we have commercial zones and we have residential zones. Just please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Bosch. I live at 37 Arrow Lane in Nashua. I am the name-dependent, but as you can see here, I'm not the only one that's being impacted. There just wasn't really enough room to get everybody to sign that same piece of paper together. I've dedicated more than half my life to service to the city of Nashua. I've served as a teacher, Nashville did for 23 years. I in fact taught the children of at least one of the members of the zoning board. I've lived in Nashua for the past 21 years and together with my wife, raising, we are raising our two wonderful young sons you've heard from earlier this evening. We're raising them in the city of Nashua, just like many others in this room have done. Unfortunately, as you've heard tonight, the small suburban residential neighborhood in which we are raising our children is on the precipice of disaster. You've heard about our nightmare that began on January 25th of this year. We immediately worked to become more informed of all the areas... We immediately worked to become more informed of all the areas of this situation and the zoning laws. We alerted the city of our concerns and politely worked to try to get this resolved, to have the ordinances enforced, to ensure that our voices were heard, and our rights were protected through the traditional process. Unfortunately, we're here with an appeal, and not in response to a request for variance. The planning department erred when they flip-flopped and changed their official position regarding the land use for 16 Archery Lane. The property owner has always asserted that it was a single-family dwelling, but the planning department did their research before making the official determination that the intended use was in fact not a single-family dwelling. The property owner thumbed his nose at this determination and just repeated that it was a single-family dwelling. Unfortunately, the planning department caved and allowed the false classification of the property while still understanding that the intended use was not changing. An intended use which is not permissible at 16 Archery Lane. This is an erroneous decision. This is why we had to file an administrative appeal. We all know that the intended use is not a single-family residence. Everyone knows what a family is, and as already outlined to you, Nashua's ordinance makes this clear about it being an individual or two or more persons related within the second degree of kinship or by marriage or adoption, living together as a single housekeeping unit, and then allows for the idea of necessary domestic help beyond that. Mayor Donchus requested for us, for me to meet with him back after we spoke the March 26th meeting of the Board of Aldermen. When we met at that time, Alderman Tippett was with me, my father-in-law attended with me as well, we met in his office on April 4th. At that time, he indicated that he knew it was not a single-family dwelling. He made it clear that the intended use clearly involved bed or room renting. He further emphasized the intended use was essentially commercial use. Since these are all things that we had already seen, it was a positive to hear from our mayor that he saw the same issues. He also said that as an alderman, he'd attended hearings in support of his constituents. We're very glad our alderman and, and Alderman Sullivan as well supported us tonight. But he also mentioned that as mayor, he could not attend and speak in support of us. I honestly do not know if anything I can say tonight will be able to convince you to follow the law, fix the errors of the planning department, and protect our wonderful neighborhood. I pray that it does. What I do is know is that if this illegal land use is allowed to continue at this property, then the illegal uses will grow in the suburban residential neighborhoods, uh, suburban residential zones and neighborhoods near schools throughout the city. Everyone will need to be wary of who is buying a property whenever a for-sale sign goes up on a property. More importantly, I know that the lives and rights of my family and everyone else in our small neighborhood are worth fighting for and worth protecting. There's 40 more people in this audience who didn't even speak tonight who are here in support of this, and I really, I humbly beseech you to follow the law, remedy the errors of the planning department, and end this nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in favor of the appeal of the administrative decision?
I'll, I'll speak. I'm a Nashua native. As Patty said, my uncle built every one of these homes.
Your address, please.
5 Cortez Drive.
Thank you.
Um, I'm not in favor of this going in the residential neighborhood. I know we need rehabs, but I also have had friends die of drugs. I've had friends' kids die of drugs. So it's an iffy proposition, and I think to be around little children is not right. Um, I think it's also sober house number 77 in Nashua. You know, I just think it needs to be in a different location, so I do wish them luck. I know it's a very hard journey, but not in a beautiful, sweet neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in favor of the appeal of the administrative decision? Okay, those in opposition with, or questions or concerns, and I don't know if, Mr. Durfee, if you want to speak, or if you're going to wait, uh, on behalf of the city, do you want to wait?
I'll wait.
Okay, so, come on up, please.
Hi, I'm Kayla Carroll. Um, I live at 25 Congress Street. Before I read my written prepared statement, um, I do just want to say it sounds like a lot of misinformation about what sober living is. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has or that the board has. Good evening, everyone. Uh, first, I would like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to share some of my thoughts on the matter at hand today, um, and to speak on my experience and answer any questions about the operations of our home. Uh, my name is Kayla Carroll, and I am the very proud owner of Lotus House, sober living for women, um, and have been for five years now. Um, I am also a woman in long-term recovery who has seven and a half years, um, clean and sober from all mood and mind-altering substances. Watching and guiding others has been, um, my passion and my mission for pretty much the entirety of that seven and a half years. I have read, uh, the misinformed posts, the prejudicial comments, the misunderstanding and stigmas that are being perpetuated in our community. It pains me deeply and it breaks my heart to know that others in recovery, or even more so addicts still desperately in need of help, might see these sentiments and internalize those sentiments, um, and internalize it as factual rather than what it is, which is misinformation and ignorance. I hope for them that they can focus on the countless people who are standing up against the stigma, the people who recover out loud and are proud of who we are. And there are a lot of us. The two sides here today are not as different as we may like to believe. My family, which is these women at Lotus House, are not different than yours. They're very similar. At least I truly hope so for you all. Our family prays together. We are God-centered and do our best to bring God into our daily lives and circumstances. Our family cries and shares pain together, just like yours does. Our family uplifts, empowers, and supports one another. We push each other to reach our goals every single day. We have disputes, disagreements, and fall short of our chosen ideals, just like your family does. We sit down and communicate about it. We try to find common ground, forgiveness and empathy for each other, just like yours. We share meals together. We share the everyday household responsibilities together. And we share our lives with each other, as your family does. Sometimes our family members do fall short, and they get consequences. We fought and sacrificed for each other. Most of all, we might not like each other all the time, but we do love each other. True, genuine, selfless love, just like your family. And if God forbid, anyone from your family, your daughters, your nieces, your mothers, your sisters, were affected with the disease of addiction, we would welcome your family with open arms to become a part of ours. As I stated earlier, our two sides are not that different at all, and we have more in common than you believe. I know you are, and I'm here to protect mine as well. But my family is not at risk to yours. We are an asset and an ally to yours. Our goal is to restore families, to promote health and growth, and to build a better community overall. I hope it can ease your worries and fear to know that any disrespect to our community, the family in our home or in yours, would not be tolerated. We expect the best of our women. We respect our neighborhoods, our neighbors, our community, and we respect you. That's it.
Thank you.
No questions?
Yeah. Would anybody else like to speak in opposition to the appeal of the administrative decision or with questions or concerns?
Andrew Tyne on Zoom, is it possible to speak?
Um, yes, go ahead. State your name and address, please.
Sure. My name's Andrew, Andrew Tyne. I'm an attorney, 18 Maple Ave, Barrington, Rhode Island. And I represent the, um, owner of the property, New Life New Hampshire LLC, the owner of 16 Archery Lane. Um, this, uh, this concerns, I'm sorry, one second. This, this concerns a, um, the issuance of a building permit. Uh, that does, that does not concern the actual occupancy of the property. And I know that we've heard a, a lot of people today speak to the occupancy of the property, and, and that really isn't the issue here. The issue here is whether or not the building permit legally should have issued. And it should have. Um, the property is not occupied. There is no one there. The, uh, individuals who are developing the property, they're, they're renovating the interior, reconfiguring, reconfiguring the interior of the property, and they are allowed to do so if they submit a proper building permit application, which complies with those requirements. And, um, the intended use, what they say they are going to use the property for, um, actually complies with the building code requirements. Um, they've been counseled after discussions with myself as to what they legally can do with the property, and they've been advised that they can legally use the property as is permitted per the zoning code, um, the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance allows a single-family home to be occupied by a group of occupants defined as a household. And a household can either be considered a family or an unrelated household under the ordinance. So an unrelated household is further defined by Table 16.1. Pursuant to Table 16.1, a single-family dwelling can have one unrelated person per 300 square feet. So anyone, any unrelated occupants that desire to live at a property, a single-family home in Nashua, can have unrelated people, up to one person per 300 square feet of habitable living space. And that is the intention of the use of my clients of this property, is to do what's legally allowed under the, uh, under the Nashua ordinance. So therefore, um, whether or not the beliefs of, 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 of the neighborhood as to what this property may be used for are actually just irrelevant. Um, and, and there are no concerns with, with parking, um, because there, there are no occupants of the property. So this is just all conjecture and speculation as to problems that don't, do not exist and have not occurred. So the only issue for this, this board today is whether or not the building permit legally issued, and it did, and it should have, based upon the properly submitted application and the zoning ordinance, which allows, um, this construction to occur, to build out this house for a, a house, an unrelated household. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Sylvia?
Yep. Just to confirm, how many, uh, people would be residing in this property if, uh, things move forward?
So, yeah, so there are no current occupants.
Not currently, but what, what is, do you, do you know what your?
Sure. What, what is allowable, well, the, the measurements have to be taken, they, they have to, they have to confer with the building department to determine, because habitable floor area, I don't believe is defined, so there has to be some discussion as to what is allowed when the measurements are taken, um, to determine what's permissible per Table 16.1. And that's the number of people that, that, that will be the maximum number of people that live there.
Okay. And, and I, I believe in that table, and I, I might be wrong here, but that's around 15, 18? Is that correct? 12? Do you have a ballpark on that?
I, I, I think the ballpark is 12, but again, after the construction is completed, there'll have to be a determination as to what is considered habitable floor space after, after it's completed, and they will legally occupy the property to that, you know, to that maximum if they have people that are desired to live there, to that maximum number. That's something that, you know, doesn't have to be decided today, because they have to comply with, um, the zoning ordinance and the building department's, um, requirements.
I don't know if there are any boarding houses in other R9 zone districts in the city, but, uh, do you have any thoughts, or could you say any thoughts about the impact to neighbors in the area if this does go forward?
So this isn't a boarding house or a rooming house? A boarding or a rooming house would allow two, two individuals per 300 square feet. So it would increase the, the, um, the density, obviously, it would be twice as much if that was the type of occupancy that's going to take place here.
Any other questions? Can you speak to, because we've heard, I'm a little bit confused though as far as the timeline regarding construction, pulling permits from the building department. I seem to hear from what you're saying that, um, the applicant for the property, for the owner of the property has followed those procedures, but it seemed like maybe there was some work being done without permit, so can you comment some on that?
Apparently, there might, may have been some missteps prior to me being involved, and, um, they've obviously complied with the process to obtain the building permit, which they did, did obtain. So what happened prior to that, it, it's irrelevant at this point.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else to speak in opposition or in response to the, uh, appeal of administrative decision?
Yeah, I'd also like to speak, if I can, onto.
Yes, to name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Kim Bach. I'm the executive director with the New Hampshire Coalition of Recovery Residences, and I live in Hooks at New Hampshire. Um, I have worked with Kayla Carroll for the last four years in the, in various recovery residents that she's run. They've always been certified by the New Hampshire Coalition of Recovery Residences. Um, and I agree with her, I think there's a lot of misunderstandings about what a recovery house is and how it's operated in New Hampshire. Um, but I also agree with Attorney Tyne that I don't want to muddy the waters with extra information for you. I think that the concern about the number of people, we are very careful about the capacity that will allow anyone to run a recovery residence at. It would probably be a little bit smaller than what the city would allow. Um, the, um, parking concerns that were expressed, the recovery houses have to have parking rules and regulations that don't infringe upon the neighbors. It, it's, it's not a drug zone area. Everybody, it's the only house in the neighborhood that would be guaranteed that there's no one in active use. Um, there's no one who is actively drinking. If someone does have a recurrence, they are immediately referred out to a higher level of care. The average age of a person in a recovery house in New Hampshire is 35. Their average length of stay is one year or more. It's not treatment. Um, there's also a requirement, if they are certified by any court to be in at least as good repair as their neighbors. If they're not kept, they're not allowed to be an eyesore in the neighborhood, they're not allowed to bring down the value of the property. Um, if there's any other questions that anyone might have about a recovery house, I would be happy to get together with people. And, um, that's, that's what I had to say tonight. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Um, actually, can you just clarify for me? I wasn't clear. Are, are you actually a, a part of a state government-run agency, or is this an independent, like more?
Um, New Hampshire Coalition of Recovery Residences is an independent nonprofit. We are the, um, state affiliate for the National Alliance of Recovery Residences. We apply the National Alliance of Recovery Residence standards. Those are standards that are recognized and accepted by Congress and by SAMSA. And we currently run a state contract to certify recovery houses across the state in New Hampshire. Um, right now, we've, we have certified recovery houses from Nashua all the way up to Littleton, and, um, from, you know, one side of the state to the other side of the state.
Is, is there a requirement from the state for certification, or can somebody just run one without any of that oversight?
There is no requirement for certification. There are incentives for certification. Um, not being certified doesn't mean the house is good or bad, but my question would be why isn't it certified? Kayla Carroll has always kept her houses certified and always kept above the standards of certification.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think that does it for folks on Zoom. Uh, and anybody else?
I have to say something. My husband says I can't. I'm just giving up to the wrong people. He just explained his name.
Okay, all right. All right. Uh, Mr. Durfee, I think.
Good evening, Chair Shaw, members of the zoning board. My name is Sam Durfee. I manage the planning department here in Nashua, and it, uh, is my decision that is being appealed tonight. I provided a memo in your packets. I apologize for its length. I apologize for its length, but I hope that demonstrates the steps and all the considerations that we went through in rendering this decision. And it was not a lack of things that we considered. It was pretty rigorous, and in consultation with the city's legal counsel as well. I want to touch on a couple of things. I don't want to rehash the memo. I think the most important, the term halfway house has been used quite a bit this evening. This is not a halfway house. We have very specific standards in our code to qualify a use as a halfway house. Primarily, treatment on-site is the determining factor. And as articulated both by Ms. Carroll, as well as in an email that she had responded to an inquiry from me early on in this process, soon after we learned of, one, the stop-work order, yes, there was some work done without permits. The building department issued a stop-work order. That began the dialogue between our department and the applicant. But I did ask Ms. Carroll a number of clarifying questions, specifically, and our first question was, will there be treatment on-site? And she said that there would not be. And she was very clear in that the women that will be living in this facility have already gone through a process at another home. I don't want to put words in her mouth as how that might be described, but my understanding is that's more closer to the beginning of the recovery tract. These individuals coming to this property in 16 Archery would have already demonstrated a level of stability, financially, mentally, behaviorally, et cetera. So I hope that helps to clarify. So from our perspective, no treatment on-site automatically disqualifies this as a halfway house. And as the appellant's attorney had stated, you know, halfway houses would require conditional use permit, and we're very aware of that. As stated by Mr. Bosch, we changed our determination. We certainly did. I'll state that we didn't initially determine this a halfway house, either. We thought it would be more of a rooming house or a boarding house. This was our initial determination based on the characteristics of the proposed use, based on what we saw. We learned additional information. We also researched the Fair Housing Act. This is incredibly important, and it weighed very heavily on our revised determination. Without diving into the legalese around the Fair Housing Act, basically, these uses cannot be discriminated against in any way that is above and beyond any related uses. The comparison that we kept making in-house was basically, how do five, six, seven college friends, or individuals more generally, you know, come together, live in a single-family home, you know, compliant with that Table 16.1, one person per 300 square feet of house? How is that really different from this in terms of this doesn't have any treatment? These people come together, live as a single housekeeping unit, another very important distinction in the code, and it does fall under that unrelated household definition as we define household, which has two definitions, family, as indicated by the appellant's attorney, and unrelated household, which was left out of that consideration. So with those being, I think, the most salient points, again, really hitting on the Fair Housing Act, which was really established to prevent discrimination against these uses. In reading some legal interpretations of the Fair Housing Act and its applicability to uses like this, it did state, you know, the known benefit of citing these sorts of uses, again, these non-treatment, further down the road of recovery, these sorts of uses in single-family neighborhoods, is highly beneficial to the success of the individuals seeking recovery. It's a stable neighborhood, and it's been absolutely wonderful to hear the character of the neighborhood from those who live in it. I'm thrilled to hear that it's such a strong neighborhood. It is unfortunate to hear the assumptions of what this use would do to that neighborhood. I don't think that that will happen. I certainly believe that Ms. Carroll will run a type ship, if you will, to keep everyone in line, so to speak, and to be good neighbors and stewards of the property. But this is not a halfway house, and we view this as a single-family use, as guided by Fair Housing, and Corporation Counsel agrees with this determination. And I would be happy to take questions.
Perfect five minutes. Mr. Minkar?
That was a perfect five minutes. So I guess I missed it in my review. Could you point to where in the zoning ordinance the on-site treatment language could be found?
So that is how we have interpreted that section of code repeatedly. So really looking at this from a consistency and interpretation, I will be the first to admit that our code is not as explicit in its definitions of this use in particular and many others. As some of you may know, we are in the process of a land use code update, in large part because it's outdated. Things change. In between, when a code is adopted, and, you know, the subsequent revisions and then, you know, eventual overhaul, we, as a planning department, have the authority to make determinations in absence of clarification in the code. And when those interpretations get challenged, we appear before this board, and you make the final decision on those interpretations, and that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Sylvia?
Even though R9 zone districts, oh, nine zone, excuse me, R9 zoned parcels are generally the same, or there wouldn't be R9, they're not identical. Would your determination have been different if this was in a different neighborhood versus this one that was still R9?
No, it would come down to the size of the home, so that 1 to 300 square foot regulation would still apply. And I would like to add that that specific, you know, unrelated house, unrelated individuals per square footage of dwelling unit, that is specifically articulated in the Fair Housing Act as a reasonable regulation for this use. But to answer your question directly, no, it wouldn't matter where because the use still would be determined, single-family, provided no treatment is being administered on-site.
Does that formula vary through different districts, or is it the same 300 square foot?
No, no, it doesn't vary by district. It varies by use, and I say the word "use" with a bit of an asterisk because if you look at the table, it contemplates building, it calls it building types. And in that main kind of qualifying column, it talks about building forms, single-family, duplex, but also things that would more likely be construed as a use, like a fraternity or sorority, and those have different numbers. And trying to define differences and similarities between apples and oranges, really, you have things that are use, you have things that are form, I think points to the fact that our code is outdated and desperately needs to be updated, really in regards to this. You know, we recognize the challenges that we face with fentanyl and related substance challenges, and this really is a sensitive issue, and it needs to be updated. But lacking that, this is the best determination that we could come up with that would save the city from facing a fair housing challenge.
Looks like the board's all set. Thank you. Attorney, I don't know if you want to do the rebuttal.
Absolutely.
All right. Just a reminder, you have five minutes for this.
Sure.
And it should be about anything that was part of the recent testimony.
It will be precisely about that. So, and thank you for the opportunity for the rebuttal. So first of all, I want to clarify this sort of twisting of your ordinance. It sort of reminds me of when I made a kind of bogus argument to a judge I was clerking for once as a young law student, and he said, you know, either you're stupid or you think I am. And he said it as a joke, but the gist is here. Your ordinance in R9 allows a single-family dwelling unit. Then dwelling unit is defined, and there's two different kinds of dwelling unit defined. There's the family kind and the unrelated persons kind that we've heard about. The unrelated persons kind is not allowed in the R9. Only the single-family dwelling unit is allowed. So that argument does not fly. It's not valid at all. In terms of what Ms. Carroll and Ms. Bach said, you know, I don't think anyone here is insensitive to that mission and that goal. But the law is that those things are up for the planning board to decide and evaluate under the conditional use permit criteria. It's not up for the planning department, or the building department, or the ZBA to make that decision. Your ordinance doesn't grant that authority. It only grants it to the planning board. That's why a conditional use permit is needed. With respect to what Attorney Tine was saying, you know, I think that's misdirecting you with dimensional regulations which aren't relevant here. We're talking about the use that is not legal. It's not about the dimensions or whether the electrical permits are valid, but issuing a permit towards the furtherance of a use is what will trigger the appeal, or it can be Mr. Durfee's decision. It doesn't really matter because that logic doesn't work. Are you trying to tell me that you're going to get these permits and not do the use that we're talking about? These permits are obtained in furtherance of that use that is prohibited under your zoning ordinance. A very important comment that I believe you raised, sir, and I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on so I can't read your name, but it's absolutely true that the words "treatment on-site" don't appear in the definition of halfway house. And Mr. Durfee just told you that that's how he has interpreted it, and he's told you why he's done that, because he thinks the zoning ordinance needs to be amended. The planning department doesn't get to do that. The residents do that. The planning department cannot rewrite the law or reinterpret the law for what it thinks the needs are. Those needs could be completely valid needs. They could be excellent. I'm not here to disagree with any of those needs, just like I'm not here to disagree with what Ms. Carroll said or what Ms. Bach said. The point here is that this board doesn't have the authority to say, "Go ahead." The planning department doesn't have that authority, and the building department doesn't have that authority. You have a law that is in place today. It doesn't matter what the amendment may or may not be in the future, or what the planning department thinks the amendment is. Today's law matters, and under today's law, you cannot do this in this zone. The, you know, the Fair Housing Act is not at all implicated here. The Fair Housing Act completely allows you to control certain types of land use in zoning districts. If it didn't, then none of our zoning ordinances would be valid. So that's a bogus argument. It's not true, and the city's not facing any sort of lawsuit because it has a zoning ordinance that says only single-family residential dwelling units are allowed in this zone. Virtually every city, if not every city in America, has a zone like that. They're not all facing a federal lawsuit. That's preposterous. We can't get away from the simple facts, and I know that the residents raise their concerns, and maybe those aren't specifically part of deciding whether the law allows it or not, but what it does is it gives you the context of why the residents made the law that they did. You have to remember, the residents of a municipality are the legislature. They're explaining to you why that law is what it is, to the extent it's not obvious. So their testimony is certainly relevant. But here, the decision remains the simple one. Your ordinance does not allow this use. This use is a halfway house under your ordinance. The idea of treatment on-site is not part of your ordinance's definition or criteria for a halfway house. You have a set of facts that was just admitted by the people speaking in favor of the proposal, whether you want to call it a halfway house or anything else, that admits that it specifically meets the current legal criteria of a halfway house. That's not allowed in this zone without conditional use permit from the planning board. There isn't much more to discuss here. Thank you, and I will answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? I could well say...
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Durfee?
Thank you, Sam Durfee, planning manager. I want to address three specific points. Treatment on-site, the words "on-site" are not in the ordinance, but the definition of halfway house, as read by Attorney Sweniarzki, does say rehab, modification, and counseling. Those are being administered on-site. That's inherent in the use. That is something that is occurring with the use. So while it does not explicitly say "on-site," if those things were not being administered on-site, that would not be the use. So I think it's pretty plain language that those have to be administered on-site for it to be a halfway house. Second, this idea of unrelated individuals living together is not a permitted use. An unrelated household isn't a use. It's a definition, just as family is a definition, both of which fall under the household definition. So just because it's a definition doesn't mean that it's a use. It would not be acceptable in a single-family home. There's nothing in the code that prohibits an unrelated household living together in a single-family home. Two individuals unrelated renting a single-family home out of college would therefore, by that logic, not be allowed. Third, the ability that we have as a department to rewrite or reinterpret law and that not being permitted, you're right, we do not have the ability to rewrite law, but we absolutely have the ability to interpret it. If we didn't, appeals of administrative decisions wouldn't exist. This application wouldn't be here before you. There's a state statute that specifically allows for appeals of administrative decision, recognizing by the legislature of the state that staff have to make determinations, and when those are wrong, they may be appealed to the zoning board. By the very existence of this application for appeal, it validates the fact that we have the authority as staff to make interpretations of our zoning ordinance. That's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and I'll open the public meeting. Anybody want to start? Mr. Sylvia?
Okay. This is definitely a difficult decision. Just a few things I'd like to say. First, I don't feel comfortable speaking beyond the four walls of what's in the agenda here in regard to the intended use of a property or boarding house. For a boarding house or room renting is not permissible. And I don't feel that a boarding house or a room renting is appropriate at this property, from what I've heard. Some things I'd just like to add in regard to some things that were said. Our purpose is to be here when things that need to go beyond the zoning ordinance are required, so I don't understand the comments about illegality that I heard earlier. I've only been on this board for two months, and then the city staff has been professional from every interaction I've had with it. But I also don't believe, from what I've heard tonight and from correspondence, that a building with this many people in it would be appropriate at this property, given the size of the street, the issues with mold. I know that can be remediated, but that might be an issue in the future. Parking concerns, I'm just very concerned about that, and I don't know if that is pertinent or not, but I will be voting in favor of the appeal.
Mr. Neal? And if you don't mind me just, sorry, one thing I forgot to note, even though I referenced it, we did have a bunch of emails which we have printed here. In, I think most are in opposition. I think some are in favor, but they will all be part of the record as well. Especially if some of you submitted emails that, and didn't testify tonight, they will still be part of the record as well. And the board has seen all of these communications already. Sorry.
This is a very tough case. First of all, Mr. Durfee does a great job, and it does a thankless job, and this was a very tough case to work through. The amount of feedback from the neighborhood is overwhelming. The testimony we heard from the folks who are going to operate it is heartfelt. Here on the board, I know in the last year, we have sat through several applicants who were, I'm not going to call them halfway houses, I'll say treatment houses, came in here, very open with the property, with what they were going to do, what their program was. Nobody ever talked about a family. They were very upfront with, we have a 28-day program, you know, a 60-day program. And I take great pride in the fact that we worked with them. In fact, the first, when I remember, when I first got here, quite a few neighbors showed up in opposition, and by the time it was over, and the applicant went through everything that they were going to do, and literally turned around and made some concessions to the neighbors, everybody walked out of here with a smile. And if we're doing our job right up here as volunteers, you know, that's the best thing that can happen for us. As I read through all the documentation, you know, certainly going through... As I read through all the documentation, you know, certainly going through the codes here, going through the letter from Mr. Attorney Swenarski, and I'm probably killing your name, the documentation from Attorney Tine, I have to say, I needed to take a step back a little bit and think about it as somebody who was just looking at it on the eyeball test. And quite frankly, when I look at it from a layman's terms, I do believe this fits the characteristics of a halfway house. When I do read the definition of what a halfway house, I don't see anything in there about treatment. It's very simple and straightforward what a halfway house is. There was documentation and communication about the Federal Housing Authority, Corporate Counsel, what they thought was appropriate. And while I do sympathize with that, in my opinion, our job as the board is to go with what the regulations are now, as they are written. And I understand life changes, regulations need to change with it, but with the way they're written right now, it basically says to me that a halfway house needs to go through the full review, the full permitting process as a conditional use. Even if we talked about it being a boarding house, that's not even allowed in the R9 zone. I do feel that Attorney Swenarski had quite a few good points in his letter. Attorney Tine, I don't think a lot of what he was talking about really applies to what we're trying to do here. I think that kind of muddied the waters here a little bit. So really what I think needs to happen is this needs to go back in front of the planning board, zoning board if necessary, and I think a spotlight needs to be put on it for everybody to put out their opposition and why, how it's going to operate. Everything will be out there and because what I'm hearing from the neighbors is that nobody knew what was going to happen. Kind of they keep saying things happen in the middle of the night and somebody bought this and they got caught doing this and da-da-da. And so I think it needs to go through a full process, a full permitting process. So I am in favor of the appeal as well.
Mr. Mancar?
So I'm also in favor of the appeal. I spent a lot of time thinking about this and I really appreciate the work of the staff put into this. This was a difficult decision for them without question. The analysis that was put forward clearly indicates a great deal of thought. But to me, it's relatively plain. I disagree with the assertion that we can't look at the intended use, that we can only look at the building permit. To me, the intended use is very plain. I think we need to look at all the circumstances surrounding the case, including all the testimony that's presented. And from all the testimony presented and reading the definition of a halfway house, I can't find that it's anything other. And I'm going to read the definition in part. "Any halfway house, a halfway house means any residence where two or more people reside for the purpose of their rehabilitation, behavioral modification, or therapeutic counseling. A halfway house may include a facility for the care or supervision of delinquent youth, persons with mental health illnesses, or substance abusers, e.g., alcoholism, drug addiction, et cetera." From all the testimony that we've heard, to me, it's plain. There is no requirement for onsite treatment. There is no requirement that you have to provide all of those services. It's merely a place for the rehabilitation of people who are suffering from or challenged with one of the conditions and the conditions that are specifically mentioned as examples are in fact exactly what this residence will be used for. I have no objection to the use of, in itself, of a recovery residence, as it's been called. But again, I think very, very plainly, from the testimony that we've heard tonight, the intent is to use this house as a halfway house as defined in our ordinance and for my read of the ordinance that is permitted in the city of Nashua as a conditional use that would require approval from the planning board and would require that the specific criteria in the ordinance is met.
Mr. McCarry?
Yeah, I'm not as articulate as my colleagues, but I agree with them that this does, you know, look to me like a halfway house and it really should be up to a full discussion of the planning board and if it comes before us, the zoning board. We cannot separate the use from the physical building and I would vote to approve the appeal.
I mean, I found this to be a very hard case in a lot of ways and extremely sympathetic to the neighborhood and sympathetic to staff as well because I think, and it's very much a needed use. I think ultimately the fact that even though I think there's a reasonable understanding of the decision, the way it was made, I think, especially to the way you clarified, I think there is this question about if it seems to fall too much under that definition despite how we might have looked at things in the past, it seems that it should go through this process. So I guess I feel like I've learned a lot as well with this, but I think the thing to do is to uphold the appeal and have it go through the processes already noted. So is there any other discussion? Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah, I just need to, I guess, add an addendum to what I said. I do agree with what Mr. Mancar said that I think more discussion in regard to this would be appropriate and I just do want to add that I don't want to be opposed to any sober home in any R9 in any situation, even though it's not permitted explicitly without a conditional use for it. But in this particular situation, I feel that that's what we're talking about tonight. And I feel like from what, like just to repeat what I said earlier, within what we're discussing right now, I believe that the appeal is the right decision. That's what my determination's on, just what is being discussed right now. I feel the appeal is appropriate.
We do need a motion on this. Would somebody like to offer that? It could be a pretty simple motion.
It's on the alternate. I guess I didn't get to do it earlier, so I'll do it now. Okay. In the case of New Life LLC, an appeal of administrative decision by Timothy Bosch, 37 Arrow Lane, Nashua, relative to the intended use of a property for boarding room, boarding house or room renting is not permissible under land use code at 16 Archery Lane. I move in favor of the appeal of the administrative decision.
Is there a second, Mr. Neal? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? It passes unanimously. So there, I guess there is still a window of appeal even of this. There could be a rehearing request, right? So that's possible, that there could be a rehearing request, but right now, the decision has been made. All right. So maybe we'll give you, if anybody, you're welcome to stay. We have a couple of minor parts of business to do with approving minutes and looking at regional impact for the upcoming meeting. Otherwise, I'll give you a few minutes if you want to clear the room and best to take your conversations out into the hallway.
You need to get better at organizing it all.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
I really appreciate it very, very much.
Have a good night. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Yeah, we have minutes, two sets of minutes.
Are there two?
Yeah, there are two.
I got one and a half.
Oh, well, yeah, actually, I did.
It's, the second one had already been voted on before. I went and looked.
Oh, okay.
The March 26th.
Okay. Yeah, it didn't, and all of it wasn't there. I wanted to bring that up. Okay, so we had just one set of minutes. We just had some carry along pages, I guess, that were like the first six pages of the March 26th, seven pages.
So did you get a complete set?
No, it was an incomplete set, so. But Mr. Lionel was noting, we already had approved those minutes from before.
So we should, yeah, we should only be getting one set here. April 23rd is the one we need. It's here.
Yeah. But then there is a partial from March 26th.
I'm not sure on that one, but it should just be the April 23rd.
Yeah, I didn't see any minutes in my packet, so.
I went and looked at the minutes of previous meetings and you had, even though I wasn't here, you had approved, the board had approved on March 26th.
That's on me, I thought I did.
So we have one set of minutes for tonight, which is April 23rd. Did anybody have any corrections or clarifications? All right, motion to approve on Mr. Neal and is there a second, Mr. Mancar? Any discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. And then we have regional impact for the May 28th meeting. There's seven, eight cases. I didn't get a chance to fully scan it myself.
I did, I didn't see any regional impact.
Would the Harbor Homes potentially be regional impact?
Just occupying an existing building where they already are. They're just expanding some office space.
Okay, so I think we concur, no regional impact.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay. And any other business for tonight? Okay, move to adjourn at 9:32. Good job, everybody.
Yes. And that, okay, what do I do with these? Do I give them the card? Okay.